Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have three sets of minutes up for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve our, pardon me, September 3 work session minutes?
So moved. Second.
A discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Is there a motion for the September, or to approve the September 10 public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. And finally, is there a motion to approve the September 17 work session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's the Bill and Sheila Show this afternoon. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. We have several presentations this evening. We are pleased to begin this evening with a proclamation to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, and I will call on my colleague, Mr. Del Aguilera, to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 through October 15, 2019. Since 1968, Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated annually. This month honors the inerbal social, political, economic, and cultural contributions that Hispanics have made to our country. The Hispanic population of the United States, who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, and the Spanish-speaking nations of Central America, South America, and the Caribbean, now constitutes over 18 percent of the nation's total population. Today, organizations in the United States use the term broadly to refer to persons with a historical and cultural relationship either with Spain or with Spain and Portugal, regardless of race. Five of the Central American neighbors, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, gained independence from Spain on September 15, 1821. Chile gained independence on September 18, 1821. Obviously, Mexico's Independence Day is different from that of other nations. On September 16, 1810, the Grito de Dolores, or Cry of the Dolores, was declared by Father Miguel Hidalgo, beginning with the Mexican War of Independence, September 16, 2019. It marks the 209th year of Mexican independence from Spanish rule. Therefore, the mayor and town council of Herndon, Virginia, today hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2019, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the town of Herndon, and recognize that Hispanic Americans and Latino heritage have a positive impact and enduring influence on our community through many fields, including business, law, politics, education, community service, the arts, sciences, and as member of our armed forces. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon encourage all residents to learn more about the history of Americans of Hispanic and Latin heritage, to observe this month with the appropriate programs and activities celebrating these diverse cultures, and highlight that this is also an opportune time to celebrate the heritage of people from the other Spanish-speaking countries throughout the world. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there comments from council? Yes, sir.
I would just like to say thank you to the council for supporting this. Thank you to the town for observing this, and I want to thank all the folks that said they would be watching but couldn't come down here in person. And just a little personal reflection, I'll tell you, just having spoken to so many people in our community, there's still this level of fear out there, and it's prevalent in Latino culture, and I think people understand the reasons why, but asking someone just, you know, how they're doing or looking them in the eye as you pass them might go a little long way to revealing some of those fears, and I thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from council? Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank my friends in the audience who came out to recognize this moment. Casey Chavez, who I've known for many years from the Chamber of Commerce, Alex Rodriguez, Betty Baca, and anyone else in the audience who is of Hispanic or Latin descent, thank you for coming out and celebrating this moment with us. As my fellow council member is well aware, we are blessed in this community with some very successful residents, and the Latin community is the backbone of our economy. Sorry, I was a little distracted there. And I want to thank all of you for being here for us and being one of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Also, thanks everybody who has a love for the culture south of the U.S. border. I personally spent my last semester in college student teaching in Mexico City, Mexico, and it was an absolutely wonderful experience. And I've actually met one of our officers that went to the very same school that I went to when I was in college doing that student teaching, Cleo Americano, and so it was kind of funny because I've never met anyone else in all the years since, and then finally, right here in Herndon, one of our officers went to that school. Thank you very much, and I'm so glad we still support this.
Absolutely. Any other comments from council? Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I also feel very, very lucky and very blessed to be a part of a community that is so diverse and includes so many members of the Hispanic and Latinx community. I know in, when I walk in my neighborhood, as Cesar just mentioned, you know, being able to say hola and buenos dias to my neighbors as I walk by, there are, there's, one of the neighborhoods I walk by, they're making papusas in the morning on Sundays that I now stop by and talk to my neighbor Josephine, which I love. So we're really, really, really fortunate to be, have such a diverse and inclusive community that we can celebrate with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeKalb.
Thank you. Herndon is a diverse community, and we know Hispanic population is more than 30 percent. So should I say minority or majority? But thank you, and, you know, our community is diverse because of the Hispanic community, and especially, we have great people in Hispanic community. We can, you know, name few. Our council member, Del Aguila, and then I can see Alex and Betty there. They're not just only great people, great philanthropists, but at the same time, they're always, always, always working for the community, empowering the community, connecting the people, and that's really great. And my other request is let's not just put it on the paper, the proclamation, but really, really empowerment comes through honoring those people, recognizing those people, and actually, the Hispanic community itself, running for offices. And we want to see that because Mr. Del Aguila is the first Hispanic person to win the council in Herndon where the population is more than 30 percent. So it is still not well represented, but we are going towards there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
I'd like to add my congratulations also. This is a wonderful proclamation because it started in 1968, and we've come a long way. We still have, you know, great inroads to make in regards to truly being equal, but we do have someone running for president who's of Hispanic heritage, and we do have someone on Supreme Court who's of Hispanic heritage. So we're making great strides, and we still have a long way to go, and we can't forget that. So with this proclamation, I hope this is a reminder that we have to be equal to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. I, of course, concur with my colleagues, and I'm anxious for the nuisances data to come out in about a year because the numbers we're looking at are nearly a decade old. So it's going to be interesting to see how our population has shifted in various ways. So I thank my colleagues for indulging with this proclamation, and with that, we have several people here who I think may want to come forward and speak. We have Val Kaiser is here on behalf of the Dulles Regional Chamber of Commerce. Would you like to come forward? And then we also have representatives from the Hispanic Business Council Committee, and we would welcome you forward as well. We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much. I appreciated all the comments that you offered tonight, and I was looking up those census figures as well as we were looking at how the Herndon community has grown and with Ruston coming together and being connected with the Silver Line, all the new opportunities that lay before all of us in the community. I would also like to point out that we are having our 17th Hispanic Business Council Reception this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here at the Dulles Marriott Suites in Herndon. And what I'm excited about is we have three CEOs who will be speaking. Cesar Del Agüilla, am I saying that right? Felipe Rodriguez, Phil Rodriguez of ASI, and Juan Navarro. And I would like to invite you to add to the comments. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Hispanic Business Council of the Dulles Chamber. Thank you for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, and, you know, she already mentioned the reception. It's a fun event with music, food, and please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. I would like to invite both of you forward, as well as anyone who's here representing the Chamber of Commerce or the Hispanic Business Council Committee, and anyone who would like to come forward to celebrate this proclamation with us, and of course, my council colleagues.
We must also know that this is always the best party that the chamber has every year. So everyone, come on out on Thursday.
I wonder why.
Yes. Appreciate that.
And it's hard to believe it's time for this again already for Oct., pardon? Oh, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Del Aguila says three minutes, sir.
Yes. I know.
That is a direct quote.
Alex Rodriguez here in Herndon. I just want to correct something in the proclamation. Hispanic Week was proclaimed in 1968, and it was in the 1980s with the work of Congressman Torres and the Executive Director of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus that Hispanic Month came into being. The director of the Hispanic Congressional Caucus at that time was Betty Baca, who worked the legislation through.
We have verified this information.
You can, it's in a, you can, it's very good article about it in the Los Angeles Times, and thank you for the proclamation. I think we're catching up to reality.
Thank you, sir. Well, that brings us to our next proclamation, which is to recognize Herndon Arts Week, October 6 through October 12, and I will recognize Councilmember Friedrichs for the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Herndon Arts Week, October 6 through October 12, 2019. Celebrated annually, Herndon Arts Week affirms the town's commitment to the arts community in Herndon and recognizes that the performing arts, visual arts, literature, and the humanities are pivotal to the enrichment of human expression. Herndon Arts Week, an initiative of Arts Herndon, promotes our many wonderful community artists, arts organizations, and businesses in the town. Art Space Herndon, Dark Horse Theater and Calamity Improv, Herndon Schools Arts Pyramid, Herndon Community Band, Herndon County, Fairfax County Public Schools Arts Department, Fairfax County Library Young Readers and Herndon Fort Nightly Library, Folk Club of Herndon Rest, and Frying Pan Farm Park Next Stop Theater Company, Music Loft, Trouble Cluffs Corral, The Artists of Lake Anne, The Herndon Artists Cooperative, Bach to Rock, Sterling Playmakers, and Write on Records.
That's a lot. I kept on clicking a scroll.
I'm not even done. Northern Virginia Community College, George Mason University, and the art galleries in town provide creative outlets for our citizens and enhance our town by developing and promoting the talents of local artists. Designating an annual arts week in Herndon provides a focal point to celebrate the unity created by our town's diverse cultural heritage through the arts and demonstrates the vitality of our community artists across all fields. Herndon Arts Week brings public and private sectors together to reaffirm support for the arts and humanities and to emphasize the significance of the arts in our communities. Therefore, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2019, as Herndon Arts Week in the town of Herndon. Recognize this important week in our community and commend and support Arts Herndon, the town's official arts agency, along with the many artists, arts groups, organizations, and clubs in the greater Herndon area for their roles in organizing and hosting Herndon Arts Week. Oh, further, the mayor and, but wait, there's more. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia encourage all citizens to participate in the activities throughout Herndon Arts Week and to take part in the arts events and activities throughout the year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs. That was, that was a lot about the arts in Herndon for four square miles. Do you have any comments for us?
I do. As those of you who know me know, I love all the arts. I grew up with a father who played the piano and a mother who sang opera, and we spent our summers performing in community theater. I sang in every choir, and this has been of great benefit to me in my life. I didn't even realize how important it was to me until a few years after my husband and I moved to this community, and I found a couple of choruses to join, and then I found my community. And finding your community, as all of you know, is one of the most important things that you can do. I found Next Stop Theater, but I would never have known about these if I hadn't started with the choir, and that's why I'm such a big supporter of the arts center that we're building, because an arts center is a place for artists and arts lovers to find each other. I also think that Next Stop Theater and other theatrical groups provide an opportunity for adults and children to learn what it's like to be in somebody else's skin and to empathize with other humans, and I think that's one of the most important things that we, as a society and as humans, can do. So I recommend highly that you support every arts group you know of and care about, that you go, that you send the money every month if you can't come, and with that, I'll turn it over to Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there are other colleagues who have comments. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, this is a great proclamation. When I was growing up, some, some people know this, I am probably the only person in history to have a partial scholarship for football and choir in college. So if anyone said anything, I'd hit them. But the point being, when I was in seventh grade, I joined the choir in high school because I wanted to go skiing. I didn't care about singing, I just wanted to go skiing because it was a free trip, and it took me on this journey of being a soprano, and I started as a soprano in seventh grade, and then as time went on, I became a bass. So I learned every single chord of music, had an amazing teacher who taught, who went to Westminster Choir College and saw through the rough edges around me and made me a very good singer. And my senior year, I was on a bet with one of my friends, I went out for a school play, and I ended up getting the lead. So I was damn Yankees, I was Joe Boyd, but the point being is I was a middle-class kid who thought I was going to be Mr. Jock, and I ended up really appreciating what the arts did, and it got me to where I'm at, and it got me, it got me a college education that I wouldn't have been able to pay for. So just think of the arts in not just ways it enriches you, but how it can profoundly change your life and make you a better person. Thank you.
I was hoping you were going to sing. Maybe later.
Do not.
Other comments from my colleagues? I think everyone, we'll just go down the road.
Quickly, Madam Mayor, thanks. This is an amazing proclamation. I'm a real, real passionate supporter of the arts, partly because, A, I can't sing, and although I've played instruments, I can play the notes, but I can't make the music, and I am in awe of people that have that talent, both musically and vocally. So I'm always supporting the arts. That includes the crafts, and to the council members, Friedrichs' comments, I'm hoping we have a really, really vibrant, successful center here in Herndon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baker.
So the arts for me, I love that Bill McKenna just told a personal story. So I'll tell you from the time I was in second grade and started playing the violin and was trying to figure out what instrument I wanted to play, and that proceeded until I started playing the bass in sixth grade, which the bass is huge, and so my dad had a pickup truck, and he would go to the school, and we would put the bass up in the corner of the living room on the weekends so that I could practice, not very well, I was never very good at it. I didn't realize you could be like a bass player in a girl band. I should have thought that through. Maybe I would have continued it more, but, but it was, it was, and then as I continued on in high school and played the clarinet and the bass clarinet and the bassoon, and then figured out to be in the marching band, you can't really play the bassoon, so then I learned the saxophone. And so I was really a master of no instruments, but I did play a lot of instruments just so that I could be part of it and learned a lot along the way, and certainly formed my strongest friendships with those folks that were, that were also just attached to the arts and to music and to what that meant. And certainly, as I look at Herndon and our community and how impactful and enriching that is, that we have so much opportunity for arts and culture, life would be really boring without it, right? Why do we make money and do the things we do without wanting to then go enjoy it and appreciate it? And one of the things I love that Evan says at Next Stop, it's arts and being part of that, watching a play or a musical or being part of any arts activity or event, it's about community. It's about coming together in that shared experience and that shared humanity. So, so important, and we're lucky in Herndon to have a great wealth of it.
Thank you, Mr. DeKalb.
It's a great proclamation. Everything has already been said. It's, it's not good to be at the last. I'm not an artist. Even if I make a joke, you will not laugh, so, but.
Oh, you already laughed.
You did, so it worked this time. But I love arts. I love arts, and art actually connects people, connects community. We're not just town, but we are home, that's simply because we have arts here, and I have felt that. And art represents the history, it represents the creativity, and also the beauty of the town. And we are very happy and privileged that we have many art organizations within the town of Herndon that represents us very well, including Arts Herndon and Next Stop Theater and many, many more. So keep doing great work, keep building our community, keep connecting people, and keep enriching people. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I was in the band in high school too, but I'm not going to tell you that story. We're here to talk about the arts in Herndon. So the first arts group I found out in Herndon, I heard we had a theater company called the Industrial Strength Theater, Elden Street Players. So I'm like, I got to go. I minored in drama in college, had been in plays, so I loved local community plays, so started going there. And then it was after that that I learned we had the Council for the Arts. So I got involved with them and did lots of things, because I'm not someone that, I'm not an artist. I'm okay to do the bit parts on the stage. You do not want me to sing or play an instrument. I can, but I don't want to see you running out of here, but my yard is my palette. I go do gardening. But I am so thrilled that we've had additional groups come into Herndon, the Foundation for the Cultural Arts, which has now merged and become Arts Herndon, and has two of those groups there that run Art Space, and we were able to snag this wonderful gem over in Fairfax City running their arts groups. Joanna O'Masheir, I see you back there somewhere hiding. So thank goodness, we have got some great talent in Herndon running these groups, as well as some of the arts companies that have come into town, and just keep doing what you guys do. It really makes my day or evening when I get to come to your places of business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I didn't realize we had such a musical council. We should put on a show or something. No, I am grateful for the arts community in this town. It really brings a sense of community and a vibrancy that wouldn't otherwise be here. Something that is important to myself, and I know the arts groups and the fellow council members here, is that we try to make arts accessible for everyone in the town of Herndon. I think we do a really good job of that, and by we, I mean you all. We really appreciate the work you do. We are the, I believe we were the first arts district to be created in Fairfax County, right here in downtown Herndon. It's kind of a strange shape, but it's our downtown, and we will be the only arts district on the Silver Line if it ever opens. So we're very excited about that, and I look forward to keeping the arts alive in our downtown with the arts center and Next Stop Theater. So you'll have to guess what instruments I played in the band. I always wanted to be a lounge singer, but I can't sing, so that went out the window for me. But we are excited to have Joe Armashers here from Arts Herndon, as well as Mike O'Reilly. Joe is our president and CEO, and Mike is the president of the board. Evan Hoffman's here from Next Stop Theater, who has the best title in any organization in the town. He is the producing artistic director, and yes, I did have to Google that to make sure I got it right, but of Next Stop Theater. So we'd like to invite you forward to say a few words, and we're going to do the presentation and get ready for Arts Week. Can't wait to hear what's coming up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Mike O'Reilly. My office is at 761 Monroe Street. I've had the opportunity to appear in front of you on a number of these occasions and said a few things and occasionally had to be cut off because I went over three minutes. So I'm going to cut it short. We're looking forward to Arts Week, and I'm going to let Joe talk about it.
Wow, it worked.
Oh, well, I most certainly can go over three minutes, as you all know. Good evening, Mayor Merkel, council members. Thank you all for your support of the arts. It doesn't seem like a year since I moved here to Herndon, and I know I should have given an address, I think it's 750 Center Street, but this, that was my first Arts Week proclamation. So much has happened, and there's still more to come. I found out all the nooks and crannies in Herndon, also the wealth of all the activities that happen here, and the arts, all the arts, have so much to contribute to the general visibility and vitality here in the town and the greater Herndon area. This is truly an arts town. I'd like to thank all the people who've come out tonight, all of them, in support of the arts. Without you all and the unwavering support of our town, we'd be a mere blot on a piece of paper. So please continue to support the arts, the arts businesses. Take a class, come and see a fantastic art show, like the show we currently have at Art Space. Come to a concert, the new Friday Sound Series. We had, we supported the Hispanic Heritage Month by putting on a tango event on last Friday night. It was amazing. I opened the doors so the music would just waft out. It was fabulous. Taking a play, a musical, not only with my amazing colleague Evan from Next Stop Theater and at Arts Herndon, but also at the schools. Remember the schools, they do wonderful work, and now with their new drama director at the high school, I'm really excited to see what's coming next. Come to the regular improv nights we do, and be prepared to laugh a lot. I know Cesar and Sheila came one night, and, well, anyway, just watch this space, Art Space. Next year, we have some fantastic projects. April will be a celebration of Children Month, Children in the Arts, to honor our Pyramid Art Show, Herndon High School Senior Show, and we'll be having a very special Virginia Traveling Art Gallery in town, just a small 78-foot truck trailer that I think I need to go and talk to certain people about. But, and in June, along with Herndon High School students, we're going to be celebrating Herndon Pride with a fabulous cabaret evening at Arts Herndon, which in turn will kick off the two weeks of Northern Virginia fringe in the area. And we will be partnering with TEDx Herndon to bring interesting dialogue and discussion to the town. So watch this space. The arts are very much alive in the town of Herndon, and we're proud to be part of that. Once again, thank you, Town of Herndon, mayor and council, and all the staff that make the arts flourish in this town. Without them, it would be impossible. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I would like to invite forward all of our representatives from our arts groups to come forward for the proclamation and presentation, and any arts supporters in the audience that would like to join us, as well as my colleagues. We're pleased to have Ian here this evening with lots of his friends and family and colleagues from, colleagues from, I'm sorry, from, with Elizabeth, let me see who else here, Elizabeth Nordling, Elizabeth Fosler, the Director of Growing Kids Therapy Center and many others. So I'm going to actually recognize the Chair of the Youth Advisory Council, Councilmember McKenna, to say a few words.
Yeah, this is really a privilege, and it's happy and sad at the same time, because we started this group back in December 2017, and I didn't know what to expect. The goal of the group is to help educate the youth of the town in understanding local government, because we do learn about federal and state, but not many people understand how local government works. They learn things like what the difference between a Dillon Rule and a Home Rule is. But over time, what had happened, as we had these meetings, Ian taught me a lot about how to be an amazing person. I mean, the first real, I would say, amazing thing that happened was, we were, in fact, the chief's here tonight, and she can certainly attest to this, we had a meeting in February of 2018, and we were discussing different things that possibly we can, that the students could help with, and Ian, with the help of his cousin, designed a pamphlet to help police understand how to react with people who have autism, because he had a bad experience on the West Coast. And that experience, he brought forth to the town, and they changed protocols, and then they learned how to do things to be more, you know, understanding of different kinds of people. And the other thing that's been, I mean, every time we've had discussions and conversations, Ian has jumped in, and even recently when we had the five-year review in regards to what's happening in town in July, Ian's comments in regards to understanding not just traffic flow and multimodal, but multi-understanding of, you know, that we have to incorporate everyone in this town. And I believe Lisa Gillarin can certainly attest to the, just the thought behind everything that he's done. And I can't thank you enough for what you've done. Your bravery, and just being a decent person and always being the cheerful person in a room, you've changed a lot of lives, and you need to know that. So thank you. Thank you from me and for the council, I truly appreciate it. You're great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Are there other comments from council? Ms. Baker.
So, I would just like to say, I've had the pleasure of spending time with Ian, and as Mr. McKenna said, he's just a joy to be around. And I also want to say to Eric and Rosaline, his parents, who are in the audience, two really amazing people, and we're lucky to have this family in town in large part because of Growing Kids Therapy Center, right, because of the resources and what Elizabeth's wonderful organization and offers to students and folks like Ian. So we're really lucky to have that whole family in our community. So thank you, and thank you to Ian.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs.
I concur with everything that's been said already, and I just want to add that I want to congratulate Ian, and your contributions are very valuable, and we are very appreciative. So I see you around town, I actually ran into you at Costco, and I thought, I know that guy. So you're becoming famous, and that's pretty cool, too. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor.
It's been a pleasure getting to know you, when you come to these meetings, and I wish you all the best of luck in your next venture.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to try to top what has been said, I think it came from the heart, and from my heart, thank you for what you've done and what you've brought to our community.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Congratulations, Ian. I think I, I met you a few times before even I was elected in the council, when I came to the Youth Advisory, and you were there, and after I won the election, I was there, and you were there, and with all our meetings. You're a great youth for Town of Herndon, you are an inspiration, and keep doing what you're doing, congratulations.
Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to speak? I can't keep up anymore. Okay, well, Ian, I concur with my colleagues, we are grateful that you and your family came to Herndon, we know that it was a big move for his, for your family to move here to be closer to the Growing Kids Therapy Center, and we're just grateful that you picked Herndon, and then we got Ian and his family. And having you as a part of our Youth Advisory Council was just a great experience. I'm really sad that you've had to move on to do some other things, I know you're a very busy guy, and so we're hoping that maybe you can talk one of your colleagues at Growing Kids Therapy Center, maybe you might be interested in taking what is going to be a tough slot to fill, but I bet there's somebody out there that would be interested. And we just are so glad that you made time for us, and we hope to continue seeing you around town. So thank you for being here tonight, and we are honored to share this certificate with you. I believe that Elizabeth Fosler, did you want to come forward and say a few words? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I had a feeling, maybe. And also, if there are any of Ian's colleagues from Growing Kids Therapy Center or the Youth Advisory Council or the community that would like to come forward, we would welcome that as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Elizabeth Fosler, 722 Grant Street, is Growing Kids Therapy Center and my home on 608 Spring Street. So I'm, and actually, we have a new nonprofit that's just starting up, and will be registered in the town very soon, that is at 205 Imburen. So, and, as a sneak peek, Ian is going to step into a leadership role in our nonprofit, which is to bring access to communication globally to non-speaking individuals. And so he's going to be serving in our non-speaking leadership council, because we believe that these are the best informants of our practice. So Ian has a huge mark that he's left, that he continues to make every day. And I am so grateful to a town that embraces the diversity, not only ethnicity, gender, and ability of all its citizens. And we live in such a progressive place, that the coolest thing is when I get texts or messages saying, hey, I just saw Ian at Safeway, or, you know, Ryan was at the farmer's market, and it's like celeb sightings when our guys are out.
Totally.
And it's a really big deal. And, you know, it's my pleasure to be a part of this community and to bring forth that mission, and I want you to know that right before Ian got here, he was with me, my other fellow Herndon resident, Kelly Berg, we were in our Bob Ross, because he is also the heart of Herndon, we were doing a Bob Ross art class, so Ian was just making art, and Kelly and I were in our Bob Ross Froze, teaching art, which we are grossly underqualified to do. But there's only happy little accidents, so. It is no accident, the magic that's come together in Herndon, and it's due in part of this leadership and embracing the leadership of our youth. And Ian, Ian and I have worked together since he's two years old, and I am immensely proud of him. Thank you.
Should be. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Certainly, we would love to hear from the star of the night.
I asked him if he really wanted me to do this, and I think he still wants me to. Do you still want me to do this?
No.
Well, it's okay, it's okay. It's been a really long day, as you can imagine, that art takes a lot out of him, and it's a beautiful thing.
Well, Ian has already addressed the council more than many other people who've lived in Herndon for a lot longer than him.
Is that true?
So I'm very impressed that he's made time for us again tonight.
Well, he did, he did prepare something, and, so this is Ian Nordling, and we're at 134 Pearl Street here in Herndon. Do you want to say this out loud? Do you think you can?
No.
All right, I'm going to read what he said. He says, hello friends, family and community members, thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to share with you this evening. I feel so blessed to be a part of such an inclusive, welcoming community, what a special place the town of Herndon is. When I moved back here a few years ago, I was anxious about calling this town home. I quickly learned that Herndon is so much more than a town. It is a community that fosters relationships, growth, education, involvement, and fun. I have been able to take part in so many of the things this community offers, like Friday Night Live, Herndon Festival, and much more. But my most valued experience has been with the Herndon Youth Advisory Council. I have been able to serve in a leadership position alongside my typical peers, something I had never had the opportunity to do before. Even more, I am able to share my thoughts and opinions, which is also something I have not always been able to do. I would like to thank each member of the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, both past and present, for treating me as an equal, as well as Mr. Bill McKenna for enabling and cultivating that experience. Thank you. Do you want to say thank you?
Thank you, you're welcome.
And to Jesse, who helps with him as well, and all the teachers, the staff, and friends, the friends who are here, this means a lot to us, thank you.
Thank you, it means the world to us as well, and so we're going to come down to present this to you, Ian, and, or we can bring it to you wherever you would like to accept it, we are happy to do that, and we would love for all of your friends and family and colleagues to come up and join us.
Madam Mayor, may I add that the art piece that Ian created tonight, he titled it The Night I Was Honored by Herndon.
I think that was our last presentation, it was. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I'll reserve them for later when we give the State of the Town, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Comments from the Town Council, I'll just start with Mr. McKenna, I almost said Mr. Baker.
I just want to thank the Town Manager for speaking at the Herndon Youth Advisory Council meeting last Thursday. We had a really good discussion, and Lucy Brown was the Chair, I think she did a remarkable job. I could definitely learn a thing or two on how to run a meeting that way. But it was really good, I think we got some good information, and next month, we'll be going to the Police Department, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs.
I had the opportunity last week to attend one of the sessions that the Fairfax County is having to run their strategic plan past residents and citizens. If you're at all interested in the Fairfax County Strategic Plan, I recommend that you go to the website and fill in your feelings. I was particularly interested in mobility for people with disabilities, in housing, and in, I forget what the other one, oh, efficient government. But there were lots and lots of sessions and lots and lots of sections that citizens should look at and should think about. They need some help, but they've done a great job putting together a new strategic plan, and like Herndon, it provides a roadmap for the staff to work with, so please help them out if you can. It's FairfaxCounty.gov, I think, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doga?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was fortunate enough to attend a dinner hosted by the Centerville Immigration Forum, lots of great things they're doing, want to thank them for inviting us to attend. The other thing I wanted to mention is the P-Back Committee, I wanted to thank the committee for providing a lot of great feedback to the comprehensive plan. Hint, let's move some telephone poles out of the sidewalk, so. And I want to proactively thank the Herndon Police Department for coming out and taking care of some speeding issues at the fortnightly Boulevard and Gray Street intersection. I'm seeing and hearing that that's a pretty significant place that people are speeding, it's become a real hazard, so thank you for helping us deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Sure, so yesterday, the Town Manager and I happened to go to Metro Monday, so that's an event that the Chamber of Commerce sponsors once a month, to kind of give an update, yesterday's update was on the Reston Station specifically, next month's update will be on Herndon Station, so the Town Manager will be speaking at that one. But although it, you know, we all have heard what's happening in the news and that it is, it continues to be delayed, but there is lots of good progress at the same time that is being made, we are so confident that we will see a metro here by a year from now. But it was exciting to hear about the progress and just how much development and activity and what this is bringing to our region. This Saturday, if, for those marching band folks, again, I'll mention this, because Herndon is lucky enough to host the showcase of bands every year, so this is bands from throughout the region, and it's, our, Herndon's High School is the one that gets to host this every year, and so that means we get the concessions and some of the funds from that, so it's a great event to support, and it's just a cool way to spend the day, it's going to be a beautiful day on Saturday, if you want to spend it watching marching bands from around the regions, it's from like 12 to noon to nine-ish, check that out. And then also, many of us will be at VML next weekend, so Virginia Municipal League, right, it's the Association of Local Elected Officials across the state, and so several members of council will be at that starting next weekend. Thanks.
Can't believe it's next weekend already. Mr. DeKal.
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything to share today.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just a reminder that our big fall trash pickup is September 7 through 11, so it's easy to remember, I mean, October, 7, 11, so October 7 through the 11th. Nature Fest is this weekend on Sunday, I hope to see a lot of you out, it's a great event. If you don't have a kid to take, just go tell them you're a kid. I go every year, even though my kids are grown, I go without them and just hang out.
We'll loan you a kid if you're interested.
No, that's okay.
Just trying to help.
I'm good, thank you. And I also plan on attending the band event this weekend. It's FairfaxCounty.gov, I think, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doga?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was fortunate enough to attend a dinner hosted by the Centerville Immigration Forum. Lots of great things they're doing, wanna thank them for inviting us to attend. The other thing I wanted to mention is the P-Back Committee. I wanted to thank the committee for providing a lot of great feedback to the comprehensive plan. Hint, let's move some telephone poles out of the sidewalk, so. And I wanna proactively thank the Herndon Police Department for coming out and taking care of some speeding issues at the fortnightly Boulevard and Gray Street intersection. I'm seeing and hearing that that's a pretty, pretty significant place that people are speeding, it's become a real hazard, so thank you for helping us deal with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Sure, so yesterday, the Town Manager and I happened to go to Metro Monday, so that's an event that the Chamber of Commerce sponsors once a month, to kinda give an update, yesterday's update was on the Reston Station specifically, next month's update will be on Herndon Station, so the Town Manager will be speaking at that one. But although it, you know, we all have heard what's happening in the news, and that it is, it continues to be delayed, but there is lots of good progress at the same time that is being made. We are so confident that we will see a metro here by a year from now, but it was exciting to hear about the, the progress, and just how much development and activity, and what this is bringing to our region. This Saturday, if, for those marching man folks, again, I'll mention this, because Herndon is lucky enough to host the Showcase of Bands every year, so this is bands from throughout the region, and it's, our, Herndon's High School is the one that gets to host this every year, and so that means we get the concessions and some of the funds from that, so it's a great event to support, and it's just a cool way to spend the day, it's gonna be a beautiful day on Saturday, if you wanna spend it watching marching bands from around the regions, it's from like 12 to noon to nine-ish, check that out. And then also, many of us will be at VML next weekend, so Virginia Municipal League, right, it's the Association of Local Elected Officials across the state, and so several members of council will be at that, starting next weekend, thanks.
Can't believe it's next weekend already.
No.
Mr. DeCall.
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything to share today.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just a reminder that our big fall trash pickup is September 7 through 11, so it's easy to remember, I mean, October, 7, 11, so October 7th through the 11th. Nature Fest is this weekend on Sunday, I hope to see a lot of you out, it's a great event. If you don't have a kid to take, just go tell them you're a kid, I go every year, even though my kids are grown, I go without them and just hang out.
We'll loan you a kid if you're interested.
No, that's okay.
Just trying, just trying to help.
I'm good, thank you. And I also plan on attending the band event this weekend, and if you're someone who enjoys the bands, or you have kids in the band, or you're a graduate that went to school and played an instrument, you might wanna say thank you to Arthur Knopman one day when you see him, because years ago, I remember when they were having that event, and they couldn't use the field because it had been raining so much, and it would just destroy the field, plus it was gonna destroy all their outfits and everything else, and now we have two turf fields at Herndon High, and the reason Arthur worked on that was because he was in the band once upon a time, so don't think it was for the football team, it was for the band, thank goodness, I thought it was awesome, and it's a great event, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is comments from the audience, this is the opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is not listed as one of our public hearing items, that does include any general or consent items, so you have up to three minutes, state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Who would like to come forward, Mr. Mitchell? It's nice to see you out and about.
Well, thank you, it's nice to be out and about. Steve Mitchell, 1291 Monroe Street. I'm here this evening, I actually had a conversation with staff last week, I'm looking into some affordable housing or accessory dwelling unit for my daughter, trying to, being able to help her stay within the town, because of just, you know, whatever happens, happens. But, in looking at the previous application that was submitted to the town, the most recent one up here on Elden Street with the special exceptions and requirements, and going through that application, my daughter would not be able to qualify, because there's age restrictions, things of that nature, and I'm not, we don't wanna get into the technical part, but there are certain things, and I, and I want to work with the staff and see what we can accomplish, and I understand that you all actually had a very extensive work session about a week or two ago, and these are the types of things that are being discussed now within the counties and in Northern Virginia, because workplace housing, affordable housing, accessory dwelling units, and it's a very positive thing as we become more of an urbanized society rather than a suburban society, and it actually is going back to what the town of Herndon used to be, where there were a lot of rooms for rent in the town of Herndon, I know that my wife's parents at one time probably lived in over 20 houses within the town, so we're kinda going back, recycling, recycling, and I like to be part of that, to offer the, where, how it impacts us, or my daughter, and, and Al for some positive input to it, and I'll be working with the staff hopefully to bring this forward, and with y'alls, you know, that's where we're headed with it, and I just wanted to let you know, and I'll be talking to Mr. Ashton too, so we'll try to get this thing moving forward, because there's, it's a, it's a good start, the special exception, but it can be tweaked to make it more unifying and more global, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, I hope you'll send in some official comments to the council with some specific concerns you have, and if my council doesn't, if the council will indulge me, I will let you and the audience know that we have a special work session coming up on October 17th, I believe that date is final, that is specifically to discuss this affordable housing options, that's the only thing on the agenda that evening, so we hope that you'll come and listen and give us your input after that.
Well, with your permission, I'll, I'll work with staff a little bit to maybe generate some things, to get some feedback back and forth, so we can, rather than just throwing a bunch of stuff at you.
All right, great, thanks, October 17th, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item? Ms. Glakis.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council Members, I'm Barbara Glakis, 935 Barton Oaks Place. I'm here to just say tomorrow night, the Historical Society, speaking of bands, will have a guest speaker, Margaret Janborski from Herndon High School, and she will be giving a presentation about how the Herndon High School band members honored all the veterans of the USS Herndon who led the D-Day expedition, when they were on their trip last summer of Normandy to celebrate the 75th anniversary. Also wanted to kinda take a step back and thank you again for the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, it kinda reminded me, I wanna tell you a little teacher story, I taught at Jeb Stuart High School in Falls Church for 25 years, and one thing that reminded me of this is this couple sitting right here, it's the parents of one of my former students from Stuart High School, Manny Fiero. And Stuart High School has the same kind of population as the town of Herndon, it's very diverse, it's known as one of the diverse high schools on the East Coast, it's over 30% Hispanic, it also has people from all over the world, you know, over 80 different languages, so it was very known that way. So one year at a graduation, we had a valedictorian who was kind of a wild and crazy lacrosse kinda guy, not very disciplined, and we were a little worried, we meaning the teachers, about what he might say, you know, when you get up a graduation, 'cause even though you have to submit your remarks for approval, everybody knows, once you get up there, you can say whatever, whatever you want. So, anyway, so we were all sitting out there, and he starts a speech like this, "Diversity, diversity, diversity, I am so sick of hearing about diversity." And of course, at that point, all his teachers, we had our nails in our chair, worried about what he was gonna say, and then he said next, he pointed to his classmates who were sitting in front of him, and he said, "I don't think of you as being diverse, I think of you as being my friends." And that's how I think of the town of Herndon. So, thank you very much for the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, and for being, promoting a welcoming environment in Herndon, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. We have several public hearings this evening, and staff is going to present several of the reports concurrently on the first five items, followed by separate public hearings, and there will be roll call votes. I'm going to quickly read through the, the public hearings that we will be addressing, it's ordinance 19030, to authorize the acquisition of a fee simple interest permanent and temporary easements on the property owned by James Gallagher, an ordinance similarly to authorize acquisition of a temporary easement of the property owned by the Montessori Country School Incorporated at Van Buren Street and Spring Street, ordinance 19032, for the same purpose, for the property owned by the President's Courts HOA, ordinance 19033, to authorize the acquisition of a fee simple interest and temporary easements for the property owned by Vasili Fidosav, I didn't, there were addresses in here last week, so that property, and finally, ordinance 19034, to authorize the acquisition of a fee simple interest and temporary easement on property owned by Rosario Rivera for public use by condemnation eminent domain for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. So these are all very similar in, in nature, and I will open the public hearing and recognize our Town Attorney to get us started.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. The Van Buren Street Improvement Project is a longstanding CIP project. The town of Herndon intends to construct certain transportation facility improvements to the Van, to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. In order to construct these improvements, several interests in land were identified as necessary in order to complete this project. This project includes both federal and state funds, as well as some town funds, and has been underway, as I said, for some time. It is necessary to come before council this evening to request the authorization of these interests by way of condemnation through our powers of eminent domain, because we have come to a deadline for some federal funding, and we have not been able to successfully complete our negotiations with the landowners. I do, we do have here this evening John Irish, he's the Deputy Public Works Director, who will be outlining the project for you. We also as well have Courtney Harden from Brilia Hunley, she is a private legal counsel that the town has retained, who has some serious expertise in road projects, she has special authorization from the Attorney General to handle condemnation cases, both for VDOT and for condemnors, and she will be explaining any issues or any questions that council has regarding the legal process. So I'm gonna turn it over to John Irish at this point.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council Members. What I'll do is just give you a brief overview of the project, some of the attributes of what the project is trying to achieve, some of the detail of where it's going, what the improvements are, and then some other historical timelines and factors that go into the whole project, and then after that, if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. So first of all, the project is located on Van Buren Street between Spring Street and Herndon Parkway. It is primarily identified as a key interest, a key link between the downtown and the Herndon Metro Station, and therefore is important to engage it with some improvements that'll be tied into other infrastructure throughout the town. The scope includes improving multimodal connectivity between the downtown regional trails and the Silver Line Metro Rail, it's all going to improve the bicycle facilities and ADA compliant pedestrian facilities at the crosswalks and intersections. We will be including a new traffic signal at Alabama Drive, we'll be improving road drainage throughout this same stretch of road of Van Buren, and improving the stormwater management. Part of the reason we're here this evening is to do those improvements, we are required to acquire right-of-way for certain of these improvements that are not currently part of the road right-of-way. We did, in the design of this, try to utilize most of what was already existing right-of-way to minimize any of the impacts on the adjacent property owners. The concept includes making 11-foot wide travel lanes, there'll be a bike lane in each direction from Spring Street to Senate Court, there is also going to be a section of off-road cycle track from Senate Court down to Haley Smith Park entrance on to Herndon Parkway. The sidewalks will all be improved to five foot wide, I mentioned a new traffic signal at Alabama Drive, this will also have the pedestrian improved ADA signalization as a part of that, and all the existing left-turn lanes that are currently there will be maintained. This is just a kind of typical graphic representation of those improvements, essentially, this will give us a curb and gutter, which is part of the drainage system, the sidewalks, it also gives us what we call utility or buffer strip between the sidewalks and the road surface. And then, just to give a better detailed picture, this is showing the road, the improvement alignment, starting at Herndon Parkway on the left-hand side of the side, going up and past the President's Court Homeowners Association, continuing with this being back to the bike lanes on the, on the surface. There's the Alabama Drive intersection, four-way crosswalks continuing on, the large rectangle at the bottom of this slide, that'll be an underground stormwater facility that'll collect water of the curb and gutter and allow it to be quality-controlled and quantity-controlled in line with the Department of Environmental Quality requirements with the state, and then continuing up and finishing off, tying into the Spring Street. This slide represents basically the, the project and the right-of-way and easements that we are looking to secure from the residents affected along this road. The top part of the slide, the area shaded in gray, is what's called Phase 1. Phase 1 is significant to go back and think of what Lisa Yates just mentioned, that that is the section that has a federal funding guideline, timeline, that is to require us to meet certain acquisition requirements by the 1st of October of this year. So because of that critical nature, this is saying that we need to show the Department of Transportation that we are, have secured those properties in some respect that will allow them to continue to authorize us to continue on with the construction of the project. The color coding is such that the fee take or the property that is actually being requested to become town property is in red, it's a very small portion of the overall property that's being affected. The blue is called permanent easement, this is for things such as the sidewalks, and in certain cases, on the Phase 2, which is the bottom of the slide, there's also certain parts that are necessary for that stormwater management. Green is temporary easements, temporary easements are primarily for the construction of the project. The project is going to require a certain amount of spatial requirements, clearances for the work to happen. Everything, both the permanent and temporary easements, is not any property turning back over to the town, only the small red section is, and that's about 3.2% of the entire amount of property in play here. So in effect, everything that's not red is just something that the town needs to have the rights to use, and then it reverts back to all of the property owners, and it's a matter, of course, after the end of the construction, approximately 12 months as a maximum timeframe is our estimate at this time. Timeline, this project has been going on for quite a long time, with the planning efforts starting back in the late 2011, early 2012, went through a several number of iterations, it went through several funding applications, so this project itself probably has four different sources of funding, between the federal, the local, and also town funds. By November 15, that's when the CTB, or the Commonwealth Transportation Board, recommended this project for the VDOT six-year plan, and that is essentially when this really kicked off. The VDOT project agreement in March of 2016 is when that deadline was established for the authorization for the construction to be accomplished by October 1st of this year. From that point forward, there were a number of public hearings, work sessions, there were public meetings with homeowners, and property notifications, leading up to last year's, when we first started getting the finalized detail of these easements, and that's when the contact was made primarily for the utility relocation, and then following on this spring with the land acquisition contact with the property owners. So at this point, we are asking that these easements and right-of-ways be put through this process of take from the VDOT language, that is not to say that we are not continuing to negotiate and talk to all of these homeowners, most everyone that we've been able to speak to has been more than willing to work with us, and we've had very positive response, and we expect that will continue, so this is not meant to be onerous at all, it's just a matter, of course, that we have to go through, and we expect everyone to benefit from this. Last slide is just a funding slide, general funds would be town funds, TAP is a state funding organization, the Regional 30 Share is also a local share, a local funding source, and then the Ham Sam is actually associated with the Metro Rail itself. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Irish at this time? Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Town Attorney, are we also gonna hear from our outside council?
Ms. Harden is here to answer any questions you may have, she does have a short, prepared presentation regarding the process, and then if you have any questions, she'll be happy to answer those, thank you.
Hi, good evening. By now, you're probably tired of hearing me give this presentation, but I'm going to go through it quickly, each time I get a little shorter. As Lisa mentioned, I do hold a special appointment from the Virginia Attorney General's Office. I do represent VDOT when they're required to take the land for roads, and I've been doing that for 13 years, there's a handful of us that represent condemning authorities. When VDOT does not do the taking, and it is a locality, municipality, city, town, we are on the list, and you are authorized to reach out to us and use us, they have approved that, and that has been a policy in place since 2013. What you, I believe, have been looking at over the last month and a half or so, is why are we doing this? Why isn't VDOT doing this? At the same time that that policy changed as to putting us on a list, you guys being able to reach out and use us, VDOT, or the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority was funded in, in 2013, and projects started to- was funded in, in 2013, and projects started to look a whole lot more like the last slide, which is that there's four different funding sources, and we would like the towns, counties, localities to do the takings themselves. They're called locally administered projects, and this is one of them. So the Van Buren Complete Streets is being arranged, organized, and is proceeding with eminent domain in a very normal course. The land is required to meet the federal funding requirements and to facilitate the project as a whole. One of the things that I've mentioned in the past is that Virginia is, is the most, one of the most, if not the most, property-only, property-owner-friendly state in the United States. Your staff and Town Attorney, Town Attorneys have jumped through a number of hoops to make sure that this procedure and the process has done, has protected the property owner's rights, has complied with all the statutes, and in fact, that's why I'm involved, to make sure that, you know, one more set of eyes on it. I think that covers everything, the general set of questions, but if there are any specific questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Are there questions at this time? Nope. Okay, thank you for being with us once again. Madam Town Attorney, is there anything further before we move on to the public hearings?
That's all.
Okay, so no questions from counsel? All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and we're gonna, we have had concurrent staff reports, and then we will take action, and we will hear comment and take action on each of these ordinances separately. So our first ordinance is 19030, the property owned by James Gallagher. This is a public hearing. I will call on comments from the audience on this to authorize the acquisition of a fee simple interest, permanent and temporary easement on the property owned by James Gallagher for public use by condemnation, eminent domain, for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this item? And of course, if the property owner is here, we would welcome you first. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Good evening, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello. I live in 41 Van Buren Street. And I asked the contact person, I do not remember his name, Smits, Bryan, or what, whatever. No, I gave him a couple letters and asked, I did not get any answer on this. I asked about my property, can it be affected? It's, before, it could be divided for two lots. So I asked, is this can be divided after you take some part of property from my lot? No answer. It can affect my property price a lot if it's could not be divided. That's all.
Okay.
And a small question was about some kind bushes price, that's all that you gave it to me, but it's really negotiate, it's not be, no big deals. But about the property could be divided or not, it's a big deal.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, could, are you the C.L. Fedoso?
Yes, yes, I am.
So, so you're the, we're gonna have a separate hearing on your property after the mayor calls two more, but I'm assuming you want to speak at that point?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on ordinance 19030, Mr. Gallagher's property? It is confusing when we separate them in this manner. So if there are no further comments from the audience, I will close this public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move on ordinance 19 dash O dash 30.
Second.
Approval, yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion. Any? No? Ms. Friedrichs.
We've done this a number of times, but I feel obliged to say something, given the fact that we haven't moved, chatted about this one before in public. Because this is for the common good, because this is requesting use of property more than it's requesting taking of property, I think that it's in the public interest, it should not have a permanent effect on the property in, in almost every single case, and I move approval.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this, this item? Yes, sir.
I think we have the approval, by the way. Just a second. Technicality. So we've had a couple discussions on this, and I want everyone to know that we actually put some thought into this. Anytime the term eminent domain comes up, I recoil, but this seems to be well thought out and needed at this point, and as the council member said, not, not a big permanent impact to the owner, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
I just had maybe an administrative question. So last week in the work session, there was detail that showed really the, the three pieces, whether there was fee take, the temporary easement, or the permanent easement, and in our documents in the public hearing, I, either I'm missing them, or when I looked through them, I didn't see those, maybe the, the Town Attorney?
I'm looking at Mr. Irish, too.
Are they in there? Where is it?
That's the issue.
Is it in a different place?
They're a part of the staff reports of each of those properties.
They're just listed within as opposed to, got it.
It shows a little table, and then I have a slide here as well that you-
I see it. I'm sorry. Yeah, so it's not in the same format, I see it now, that it's just listed, because in the other one, it was listed differently.
Yeah, the, the only thing that, this showed was as all combined, but what's in the staff report shows the individual amounts of the different takes and easements required for each property and their value associated with it.
Good, perfect, thank you. So, yeah.
So any more comments?
Yes, so I think that's essentially all I wanted to comment on was just, as the previous council members have already stated, it's a really small portion, and it's only for three out of the five, or three out of the six, that there is any piece that we're actually, you know, taking, and the rest of it is all about just easements, right?
Correct.
So it's, it's really, although, of course, we should always consider this, look at it carefully, we certainly want the public to review this, but we do, I think that's why after several discussions through the work sessions, that we do feel comfortable with this.
Thanks, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna and seconded by the Vice Mayor, and this does require a roll call vote, as will all of these, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel. Yes, that motion carries. Next, we are looking at the same sort of situation for its ordinance 19031, the property owned by the Montessori Country School. This is a public hearing, and once again, I'll call for comments on the audience from this particular property, especially if, if you are the owner, we would welcome you Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hi, I'm Jessie Gonimpo, I live at 106 Pearl Street, and I'm also the Vice President on the Board of the Montessori School. So we just want on the record to show that we support the initiatives, and we have signed all the papers, so like you said, eminent domain makes us recoil a little. It did for us, too, so when we saw the seizure and eminent domain, we instantly kind of bristled. We have signed all the papers and delivered them, and we do, we do support the initiative, so we just want that on the record for the school.
Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Is, is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this particular property, public hearing item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Anyone? Madam Mayor? Mr. DeAguila?
I move approval of ordinance 19031.
We have a motion to approve made by Mr. DeAguila, seconded by Ms. Baker. Discussion on the motion.
Was there anything that changed from the work session? Just checking. Thank you.
Is there discussion or comments at this point? Yep. All right, thank you for coming out and, um, taking the time to, to publicly state your support, and with that, I'll call the question and ask the clerk to please call roll. Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel? Yes, that motion carries as well. Our next ordinance is 19032, which is the property owned by the President's Court Homeowners Association. This is a public hearing, so in a moment, I will call for comments from the audience, but if I may, we did have an inquiry and a concern that we heard from by the HOA president, I believe. Do we have any, any clarifications on that this evening? And they may be here.
I don't think that we have anything to add, other than we've had some subsequent communications in the last day, specifically a memo that they were requesting regarding some agreements with the town, and that's gone out, so I'm going to assume that we're proceeding on, you know, forward.
Okay. Well, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll call for comments from the audience on this piece of property owned by the President's Court HOA. Is there anyone that would like to come forward to speak on this ordinance, on this particular property? No? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public hearing, and once again, move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Baker.
Madam Mayor, I approve, I move, we approve ordinance 19032.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve made by Ms. Baker and seconded by Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, this was another one that actually doesn't involve any fee take. This is a small amount of temporary easement, or a small amount of permanent easement.
Madam Town Attorney?
I do believe there's a small piece in there that's a permanent easement.
Oh, sorry, I said permanent easement, I was saying fee take, sorry. The small amount of permanent easement and a, and a slightly larger amount of temporary easement in this one.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will once again call the question, ask the clerk to call the roll. Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel? Yes, that motion carries. Now, that brings us to ordinance 19033, the property owned by the gentleman here who came and spoke a few minutes ago. This is a public hearing, so I will call for comments from the audience, and if you would like to, did you want to come forward and speak again on this item, or you're just asking, do you have the same concern, I'm assuming? Do we have any comments to answer that?
I can answer Mr. Fedoso's question. He, he had some questions that he had put to the community development staff through Richard Smith, and I can relay that those communications had been relayed to the proper individuals to get the letter that you were requesting, but that just hasn't been able to occur yet. So it's, it's in the works. I'm sorry.
Pardon?
I would say that perhaps you could communicate by, I know you've been communicating by email. If you want to communicate again tomorrow to Mr. Smith, I'm sure that he can give you some sort of time range.
Thanks.
But they're working on it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for bringing that to our attention. Um, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. DeCall?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 19033.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. DeCall, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Friedrichs.
Could Mr. Irish point out which property we're talking about, just so that, I mean, if you can, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I am gonna.
It is this property right here, on the corner of Alabama and Van Buren, on the northwest corner.
So that's the, the one, one of the two that we're actually taking a little property?
Correct. The reason being that this red area that you see essentially is a sidewalk easement that all the other properties had already included as part of right-of-way, for whatever reason, back years ago, that never got extended into right-of-way. So it's really just kind of making that section complete as right-of-way, so when we continue the sidewalk down through there, it's just going to be on right-of-way instead of on a public easement.
So is what you're saying, that it always should have been right-of-way?
It should have been.
And what is going on that piece of property?
Sidewalk.
Okay.
Primarily.
And I see that we're also borrowing the easement there, the bright green easement?
That is for-
And that is property that we're going to use-
For construction.
-to stage the construction, so we'll be putting barrels or something there?
Probably for grading purposes, to put the sidewalk in there to match up with the road grade. Sometimes you'll need the extra ground to make the grades work in the be-all.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, this is a time for comments-
Oh, sorry.
-in, in support or not of the motion, so if there are further comments, I would appreciate that at this time. Seeing none, I will once again ask the clerk to please call the roll. Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel? Yes, that motion carries, and last but not least, ordinance 19034, regarding the property owned by Rosario Rivera. This is a public hearing, and we will call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Baker.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19034.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion. No? Anyone?
This is another one with a very small fee simple take, 86 square feet, and then a small temporary easement.
Further discussion? Okay, I will ask the clerk to, once again, please call the roll. Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel? Yes, that motion carries. Thank you all. Next up is Resolution 19G59, to consider authorization for an application to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for Virginia Department of Transportation, Alternative Set Aside Funding for Federal Fiscal Years 2021 and 22, and the endorsement of the Central Eldon Walkability Improvements Project. I'll open the public hearing, recognize Michael Wallach, our transportation planner for the staff report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Town Council. Tonight, we're here to discuss the Central Eldon Walkability Improvements Project and the Associated Transportation Alternative Set Aside Funding application that staff has been working on. So the project area here is the sidewalk on the southern portion of Eldon Street, between Center Street and a couple parcels to the west of School Street, opposite of Main Drive, and the project area is approximately three tenths of a mile long. So this is a proximity map here. The project area is close to several important locations in town, including downtown Herndon to the east, and the Folley Lake Regional Trail, St. Joseph's School to the north, Herndon Middle School to the south, and the South Eldon Street Commercial Corridor to the west. So as mentioned here, the project area is the south side of Eldon Street between Center Street and School Street, and the proposed sidewalk improvements include a wider sidewalk from four feet to five feet wide, landscape verge between the curb and sidewalk, new curb ramps, new high-visibility crosswalks, and new accessible pedestrian signal at the signalized intersection of Eldon and Gray Street. And the purpose of the project is to enhance safety and comfort for pedestrians, improve accessibility, obtain ADA compliance, and to provide a more walkable connection between downtown, South Eldon Street, and some of the neighborhoods and the schools. So the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, it's a federal program administered by VDOT. Projects ultimately get approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Eligible projects must relate to alternative transportation, infrastructure improvements. Maximum request is $2 million per fiscal year, and funding allocates up to 80% of construction costs, and a minimum 20% local match is required. The town is applying for FY 2021 and 2022 funds. Projects must begin construction within four years, so we'd be looking at construction beginning around 2025, 2026. So this is the existing condition here. The sidewalk does measure less than five feet in the project area. Five feet is the minimum to be ADA compliant. There are 13 utility pools in the sidewalk in this portion of Eldon Street. There's one utility pool in the sidewalk on the north side, so staff felt like this, the south side here is more appropriate stretch to, to go for funding. And due to the $2 million funding limitations with this particular funding program, this project does not foresee relocation of the utility pools or undergrounding of the utilities, and I'll get into that here and later on. So this is the project plan view, this is the- So this is the project plan view. This is the east segment here. This is the area around Eldon and Center Street, and this is the area that would include the signalized intersection with Gray Street. So there's just one signalized intersection in the project area. Moving further west here, this is the area of Eldon Street and Spur Street and Eldon and Peachtree Street. And then finally here would be the Western Terminus. This is the area of Eldon and School Street and the project would terminate across from Main Drive. So this is the typical street section here. The right-of-way measures 50 feet wide, and the project would remain within the existing 50-foot-wide right-of-way. So what would remain after the project is the existing sidewalk on the north side, which is four feet wide today, the existing 2.5-foot-wide curb and gutter. The travel lanes would go from 12 feet wide to 11 feet wide, and the median, which is also the turn lane, would go from 14 feet wide to 11 feet wide. The curb and gutter would remain the same on the south side. That would be 2.5-foot width, followed by the increase, the wider sidewalk going from four feet to five feet wide. It would also include clay pavers to match the north side of Eldon Street. And then there would also be a two-foot-wide grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb, and then also a one-foot grass strip on the south side of the sidewalk up against the right-of-way there. And what this will allow is enough room, there's enough of a buffer for the sidewalk to be able to curve around the utility So this is the typical project design here, and can kind of show you, you know, the way that the sidewalk would curve around the utility pole there. Again, the project would include ADA-compliant curb ramps and new high-visibility marked crosswalks. And then this is another look at it here, and this just kind of gets into how the sidewalk would be able to curve around these utility poles. And we also foresee that there could be some sort of treatment for those that are sight impaired when you get up close to the utility poles. And that's what I got tonight. You can take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wallach? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wallach, again. At the PBAC committee meeting, we discussed potentially addressing the very severe telephone poles. I don't know how else to describe them. Was there an opportunity to research that in terms of maybe, certainly not moving them all, but the ones or two that were pretty critical?
Yeah, we've done some research. I still think we would not be able to get that, be able for that to happen within the $2 million funding limitation there. Even removing one utility pole seems to get us over that total.
How much over the total?
John, do you have a figure?
It's approximately between $50,000 and $100,000 per pole to relocate, depending on how the median is scaling.
So if the audience can hear, between, what were the numbers again? $50,000 and $100,000 per pole?
We're relocating one pole from Center and Eldon Street for $55,000.
You're in the wrong business. Okay, thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
So given... Thank you. I had it on all the time. So given that we're trying to relocate poles and underground utilities all along the main Eldon Street thoroughfare, and we're doing a lot of that in, is it?
In the commercial area?
In the commercial area. Would it be wiser perhaps to use this funding for a different location if it's not going to cover the things that we want done in that area? Or are we going to, can we try to raise the funds elsewhere to make it precisely the way we want it? Because if you don't underground the utilities at the time of the project, then it becomes very expensive to relocate them in the future. Does that, is that a good question?
I don't think that this portion of Eldon Street has ever been considered because of the extreme cost. I mean, believe me, I would love it. This is where I live, so...
Okay.
But am I correct in saying that? We're concentrating on the duck bank in the commercial area to get that.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Wallach, did I, did you want to add to that? I mean, you don't have to, I just...
No, it's been my understanding that this stretch here has been identified as needing improvement due to the location of the downtown and also the two neighboring schools there.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
I just have a comment. I know when you have a new development go in, things are underground. And quite a few years ago, we had a new development on Monroe Street, and a lot of the existing neighbors wanted to have the undergrounding, but once they found out what it would cost them, so I think if we talked to the people on Eldon Street to find out if there was a consensus about helping pay for it, we got no support to pay for it when we did that a few years ago. But we could still ask that question.
Thank you. Are there other questions of staff? Mr. DeCall?
I asked this question in work session as well, but for the record, so you're saying without moving or relocating any of these utility poles, we're still going to have ADA-compliant walking lane, right?
That's correct, yes.
And I have another question. So does this project cover having a separate bike lanes?
This project is not.
It does not. So are we considering having a bike lanes or having a ride share in that area? And when I say ride share, I'm talking about the road share, not the ride share, road share.
At this time, it does not. We have a 50-foot-wide right-of-way we're trying to work with. So at this time, no.
Is it possible to probably use that median lane, minimize the width, and then probably use and make the bike lanes on the side, maybe one side of the road, if not two? I know it may be too late to change it.
I think as a part of this project, that would be difficult, but it's certainly, I think, on the minds of the PBAC committee as being as walkable and marketable.
It would. You know, the town works with VDOT on trying to figure out what the minimum automobile lane width could be. And from our conversations, VDOT does not typically like to go under 11 feet. They may go down to maybe 10 and 1/2, but that doesn't give us a lot of room to work with.
And if I can add one other thing?
Yes, sir.
What you're seeing up there, the graphic representation of the median is a typical spot, but that area is used for left-turn lanes for all the roads coming down the other way. So to reduce that under 10 feet means we can't have a turn lane, which on Eldon Street, especially in the morning, would not be advisable.
Other questions of staff? Anyone? I just had one question on slide number 10, where it shows on the nor, I mean, on the south side, there's a two-foot grass strip, a five-foot clay paver sidewalk, and another one-foot grass strip. How wide is the sidewalk currently there? Did you say it's four feet?
It measures four feet.
It measures four feet, so it'll be one foot wider, plus the grass strip on either side.
Yeah. The grass strip that you see, the one-foot one, is more necessary for the sidewalk to be able to curve around utility poles. And that way, there's some sort of, at least visual barrier between that and, between the pole and the sidewalk.
Thank you. Further questions of staff? All right, thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing, so we'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? State your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes. When you see the red light, please try to wrap up. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Cummings. I live at 803 Eldon Street. So I'm on the south side of Eldon. I was really excited to see the idea that we were going to try to enhance the walkability of the neighborhood. I did want to, I have kind of two points. One of them is, I think, one of the things that makes Herndon especially beautiful in that area is we not only have the historic homes, but we also have the historic trees. I have two really beautiful ones very close to the sidewalk in my yard, but I know that there's a range kind of along there. And I was curious if they thought that this would impact any of the trees there. I know that some of the smaller ones are the younger ones, but we have some really beautiful tall trees that I don't want to lose in the process. And the other thing that I was going to ask is, in terms of utility lines, I feel very strongly they should be buried. I think it impacts the aesthetics of the town, and if we're going to be spending this kind of money, I would be concerned at a plan that requires us to do all this, and then as storms are increasing in frequency and stuff, that we not be prepared, not only from an aesthetic point, but just in terms of emergency management. And I think there might be some nonprofits, some creative options, some grants that help storm-proof communities that maybe we could look into. So other pots of funding that we could draw on. But I would be happy to chat with the council and do research if it's helpful. But I would very strongly focus on something that adjusts all of our needs in one big construction move as opposed to trying to piece them out.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I will ask a question about the trees. Is there anyone else that wanted to come forward while we're gathering our thoughts? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ron Cummings, 803 Eldon Street. I can't advocate or argue as well as my wife, but I will do my best. I wanted to echo her point of even if it requires a delay of a year or two, I do think that it's a good idea to, as Councilman Friedrich said, like, let's do this the way we want to do it. I get the sense that you guys also would like to see those utility lines buried. You go to other historical districts, and you don't have this mess of wires. And if we're going to entice people, you know, from the metro to come to our historic downtown, let's have it look historical. I appreciate Councilmember Olm's idea to work with the members of Eldon Street and see if there's interest in there. I think we would be interested in seeing that happen and helping make that happen. But it is a community-wide thing if that's going to be sort of the heart of historic downtown Herndon. So something to consider. I appreciate you guys' work on this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action, and we'll entertain a motion. Madam Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 19G59.
I will second.
Okay, discussion on the motion to approve, Ms. Olum.
Yeah, I think you're going to find those five-foot, instead of four-foot sidewalks on Eldon Street are like huge. That happened over, close to where I live, off of Spring Street. And there's one little piece of new area that a new development had to put in the five-foot. And it's so nice to walk on that, I don't know, 20 feet, and then I go back to the four. The other is, in Virginia, Eldon Street's 25 miles an hour. So unless we come up with some new zoning in town or law, anyone can share the road on a bicycle. So most people do prefer to ride on the 25 mile an hour sections of Eldon Street that aren't as busy, especially the two-lane part, because once you get down by the Safeway and the new, to be here soon, Sprouts, it's four lanes, and it's probably a little scarier. So when we have the cycle trucks or the improvements there, that's going to be way better for them. So I'm excited about seeing this happen, and I know everybody there is going to be thrilled over their five-foot, one-foot addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Friedrichs?
Yeah, I support this. The ADA-compliant sidewalk is so important. My mom took a tumble last week and was hospitalized, had to take an ambulance. The smoothness and the continuity and the width are so important, especially in a historic town like the one we have. So I think this is a great project. I know it's not perfect right now, but I think it's pretty close. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Baker?
Yes, so I wanted to address the folks' questions regarding trees, because that's a question for me then, too, because as far as I know, this isn't impacting any trees on that side of Eldon, correct? Right. Okay, good. And then also just wanted to address or talk about, I know we already spoke about regarding the undergrounding. Again, we would all love that. The town would look beautiful if we could underground it, but it is a significant cost difference. And just, and it's actually, it's quite cost prohibitive for this particular section of Eldon. And also, maybe what's not, what's not obvious to the public is this is, this is VDOT funding, so this is really for a specific purpose. So I get like, hey, if we're spending money on anything, let's just do the whole thing. But it's essentially use-it-or-lose-it money, right? Like, we have to use it for this purpose. And so that's why, that's why the staff has worked out this, this plan. And certainly, it is meeting the needs of making that ADA compliant, certainly making that section of Eldon be more walkable. I certainly, I know where your house is. I can picture where 803 is, and it's a block from the mayor's house. Like, I can picture that part of Eldon that we all walk on. It is, so we are trying to solve that. Certainly appreciate you coming to talk about your concerns and what we want to continue to work on and put in the CIP for future plans of where we can underground lines. But just wanted to clarify, that's, that's kind of the nature of this particular project. So, thank you.
Other comments? Mr. McKenna?
Just want to echo Madam Baker's comments regarding, thank you for coming and giving us information. More importantly, keep in contact with us. Send us notes, you know, be active. You know, we love feedback, because when you're in an echo chamber, sometimes you don't know what you don't know. So just let us know. I certainly appreciate what you're saying. So just know that, you know, we welcome the feedback. And again, with the, everything coming up, in fact, tomorrow is a five-year review of the town's comprehensive plan. You know, we would love comment, because that could be part of it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, definitely echo everything. Thank you. We, we went through some of this discussion and thought process in the work session. In fact, we asked what the cost would be to move all those lines. And then the bigger question came, where would the transformers go? Like, on whose lawn would they actually go on? And we're, we're of the mindset, we'll do it, but I'm not sure we have it in the CIP yet. So I will commit to at least bringing that up for a discussion at the next work session, because as we're planning for the budgets. But it's not going to be cheap, I can tell you that. And so maybe you all can help us sell that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. DeCall?
I agree with the council members. Yes, moving those utility poles, I mean, all the electric wires and everything underground is, in a sense, it's very important. If you see most of our contemporary cities, they have already done it. And yes, budget is an issue, but we will definitely have to put those as our comprehensive plan for future, and we'll certainly do that. And also, I would echo with everybody, thank you for coming and giving us input, and it's very valuable. Thank you.
Has everyone gotten to speak? The one to speak? Okay. Thank you. And I concur. I live at 911 Eldon Street, so it just sounds straight from you guys. And I know that you're relatively new in town, and I was so excited when I saw your house sell, so welcome. I would love, if you would like to get together and hear all the wonkiness that goes into actually finally getting underground lines. It's like, in the downtown, it's been probably a decade process, at least, of trying to get duct bank underneath. So whenever we tear up the street, we're trying to put the conduit down so that someday we can pull all of the lines through. And we're hoping that the commercial piece is happening in the next couple of years, if not sooner, right? Where it's finally almost here, right?
You asking? Yes, that's, we're hoping to make it as part, in concert with the downtown redevelopment, the Center Street realignment in that same timeframe, so that all that...
So that we tear it up just one more time.
We're still in my thunder for the State of the Town report, which I was going to mention.
Oh, yeah. Stick around, maybe there's news about that. But I welcome your comments, and I think that this is one of the frustrating things about doing things like this, is everything takes forever. We can't afford it all on our own. We've got to get grants. It has limitations. But I certainly think that in our CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, this is the type of project that if we say, hey, by whatever year we'd like to have this, let's put it in there and start figuring out how we save for it, and all those different mechanisms that you mentioned. So I also like to talk about things that are more fun than undergrounding utilities. So if you guys would like to get together, shoot me an email, and I know that my council members would welcome that opportunity, too, because once you're in Herndon, you're here. So we're really glad that you sat through all of this to talk to us about it. And the trees, we have our arborist in town, John Dzinski, he lives on Gray Street, I'm just outing everybody. But I am sure that he is involved in the discussion of this. And when we do these projects, we are very concerned about our mature trees, too. I have a magnolia in my front yard that I don't want anything to happen to either. So with that, we've talked your ears off. We're just excited when new people come to council, so thank you. So with that, we've talked your ears off. We're just excited when new people come to council, so thank you. We do have a motion to approve this particular project made by, when was that? Ms. Olm is seconded by Mr. McKenna. And if there's no further discussion, I will, oh, I don't have to call the rule on this one. I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we have, coming up next is a different sort of item. It is Resolution 19G60, to consider an appeal of the Heritage Preservation Review Board's decision on HPRB number 19-29 for a certificate of appropriateness to replace metal shingles on an existing single-family house located at 631 Oak Street. The property owner and appellant is Anne Veda Knoll, who is here this evening. I will open the public hearing and ask if there are disclosures by council. I know that we have several, so I will begin. For the record, I am an owner of real estate on Eldon Street, which is in the Heritage District. I am able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. And we have other disclosures as well.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an owner of real estate on Fort Nellie Boulevard, which is in the Heritage District. I'm able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosures with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an owner of real estate on Herndon Station Square, which is in the Heritage District. I'm able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. And I believe those are all the disclosures that we have this evening. Okay, thank you. I will call on our town attorney, Lisa Gates, who will review the process so that we are aware of the council's role in this item, which is different than most items that comes before us. So I'll turn it over to you, and then if there are questions from council, we will entertain this.
Madam Mayor, just like to say, I believe that we received some comments, and they've been entered into the record, correct?
Yes, we have. We've got quite a few today. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
So this evening, the process will be that the appellant or the appellant's representative will be invited forward to address the council and state the grounds for the appeal and identify any material or evidence to support the appeal. The council will then have an opportunity to ask any questions of the appellant. Following the questions, the mayor will call on, I believe, Dave Stromberg, the zoning administrator, to present the staff report. And council can ask any questions of staff. The mayor or the zoning administrator will then call on the chair, the vice chair, or any other member of the HPRB present to, who would like to address council on behalf of the HPRB. They may also be questioned. We will take comments from the audience, and following public comment, the applicant will have a chance for rebuttal, if she'd like to make a rebuttal. Following that, the mayor will ask for any comments from the audience, I'm sorry, before the rebuttal. And then following the rebuttal, close the public hearing and move to council discussion for action.
Don't worry, I have that all written down.
We're checking it off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for outlining that process for us. I will invite the appellant or representative to come forward, and it's nice to see you, Ms. Veda.
Thank you.
So we would ask you to come forward. I guess we know your name and address for the record, because I've already said that. But we'd like you to state your grounds for appeal and to identify any material or evidence to support your appeal, so we're all ears.
Thank you. Just a matter of order, in the HPRB, they stated the number and position of the emails. Is that protocol, or it just, we received many?
I don't have a tally of them, but we did receive many, and they have been entered into the record, and I believe we've all seen them today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Pardon?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Anne Veda Knoll, 631 Oak Street, since 1991. I've raised my two sons in our Herndon home, and now my first grandchild is learning to love Herndon as much as I always have. My goal is to continue living here and enjoying Herndon as long as health allows. Many thanks to staff and to the HPRB and to you all. This is a really time-consuming process. You've given it a lot of thought and reflection, and I appreciate that. You've addressed my heritage structure and its failed roof. At last week's work session, I had an opportunity to hear your compassion for seniors, for workforce, and low-income members of our hometown, and for others struggling to retain their lifelong homes, and I really appreciate that. It was heartening to spend those hours listening. As you know, the town took compassion on a neighbor of mine, Cheryl Lawrence, on Wood Street, by allowing her to make the same replacement that I'm requesting. And I understand that heritage guidelines are in the process of being updated, and that your compassion will be incorporated in those updates also. I'm now asking for your help. I need your help to stay in the home I love and where I've lived for almost 30 years. I pray that you can find it in your hearts to grant this senior citizen, single grandmother, an opportunity to live in a watertight home in the town that she loves. Thank you. Thank you. I have a little show and tell, if you'd like.
Well, I was going to ask, we would ask for you to state for the record the grounds for the appeal and any identifying material or evidence to support your appeal.
Here, here. This is what I collect in my yards regularly. This is a piece of my roof, and you can pass it around, but there's plenty more. I can give you all several.
Okay. Are there any questions for the appellant? Ms. Friedrichs? I know you forgot to tell us what your grounds for the appeal are, so I just wanted to remind you of that.
I thought I was pretty clear. I'd like to stay in my home. I'd like you to help me do that. Thank you.
Other questions of the appellant? Yes, sir?
Yes, Councilman.
Ms. Veda, how long have you been waiting to repair your home?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I had shared ownership since 91, and there, so at that point, under the shared ownership arrangement with my ex, I was scraping and patching and painting. But I've had sole ownership since October of last year. And I used the intervening months to get funds. And then I can't remember the exact date I applied to the HPRB. I'm sure Mr. Garcia can tell you, but it was sometime May, June, you know, July. I don't know the exact date, but it's been leaking a long time.
So, please, so while it's been leaking, have you detected any mold or any other?
Oh, yeah, there's lots of damage. I mean, there's damage to the wood that's visible, and there is mold, and it's, yeah, it's...
So the delay is putting you in danger?
Yeah, I get sinus infections. If you want to hear my medical problems.
Just curious, because we're trying to, look, we spent a lot of time addressing housing. I think this council's finally got...
No, I'm willing to suffer, but I don't want my granddaughter breathing that stuff.
Other questions?
In terms of what you're appealing, the materials that were offered...
In my application?
Yes. So they are in line with what the HPRB recommended to you, correct? Did the HPRB approve, I was confused on that, did they approve or disapprove your application? Because I couldn't get a clear answer.
That was very confusing for me as well. I don't think they addressed the application that I submitted. So I, there was no approval or denial of my application. It was an alternate, radically alternate material that was addressed.
And please don't be offended by this, but is there anything historically significant about your home?
I'm not offended, but I'm not aware. It's old, you know, it's a humble...
George Washington didn't have that there.
Not that I'm aware of. No.
Other questions about the application?
Well, I'm trying to get to why she's appealing it, and I'm not sure.
I've lived there. I mean, is that, and I'm old.
Okay, Ms. Baker?
Yes, I'm Ms. Veda. Yes, I have some questions. So I read through this, I watched the HPRB. Right, of course, I know your house, and I know that there's, you know, a few different types of roofs on your house today. So I have a few questions. Hopefully you can answer these. So do you know the square footage of the roof in question?
I think in roofing technology, it's called 27 squares. But that's not representative of the hardship and labor involved, because it's a very steeply pitched roof that requires scaffolding and, I don't know what you call it, rappelling from the chimney, they'd have to tie themselves to the chimney.
Yeah, I could tell, it's like the main, like the old part of the house is really the part in question, yeah. Since, this is a slightly questionable part, but I know in our HPRB guidelines, we do talk about financial hardship, but only in terms of roofing. We don't talk about it in others. And I know even to consider it in roofing, there's not a completely unanimous agreement on how that's handled. However, I would be curious to know if you have these prices, just so we can see the difference. Because to me, the financial hardship is not about your W-2. We don't need to know your W-2. It's about the difference for anyone of shingles versus replacing it with, so ideally, if you had three quotes of what would it be to replace with metal shingles, which I know are super hard to find, those historic metal shingles, what it would be to replace with standing metal seam, which is what the HPRB has recommended, and what it would cost to replace with an asphalt-type shingle?
Yeah, I submitted those three numbers to the HPRB, and I'm sorry, I'm unprepared, but maybe staff can dig them up, and I might be able to. I brought a bunch of paperwork. But I did submit those three numbers, and there was another component of your...
Oh, that was it. It was essentially those three numbers. There's a lot of documentation. I thought I read through it. I don't remember seeing those numbers, but I would love to have a sense of the difference.
The difference is tens of thousands. I mean, we're, oh, I know the other. So the term in the guidelines is not hardship, it's consideration. I believe it's called financial consideration.
Exactly.
So...
Yeah, because again, it's not about, we don't need to look at your W-2. It doesn't matter the wealth of a particular, or of a particular individual. It's more about just the delta of what we're potentially asking.
You know, it's not a telephone pole, but it's significant.
Exactly. And then the other question I had was, so one of the, as I read the staff report for the HPRB meeting in August, the staff report essentially said you could either approve your application as is, which was you were asking for, to replace with asphalt shingles. And then it gave two alternatives, standing metal seam or decorative asphalt shingles. Those were the three. Does that ring a bell? Does that sound right?
At one point, staff was considering, they weren't, I don't know, I don't know what, they were considering sort of ornamental fish scale, kind of, but they were low-relief, they were flat, and a lower quality than what I'm proposing. I'm looking to be watertight for the remainder of my life, which, you know, actuarially might be less than a metal roof.
Right, I mean, certainly we want you to put on a quality roof. We all want you to have a quality roof, so...
Furthermore, you know, we're talking about a third material. So I already have, in my last, I replaced the standing seam on the front porch. It was very expensive. I thought it was appropriate. I thought it was aesthetically appropriate, historically appropriate, and it was small enough that I could manage it at that time. My circumstances are diminished since that installation. And, but furthermore, the hipping of the main house is totally contraindicates standing seam.
Yeah, I would also, so I would add to that, because I did notice that you had the standing metal seam on your front porch. But to me, the significant difference of that is it's actually, it's a much more, it's much less slope.
Well, it is a lower slope, but also significantly, it's got fewer angles. So my roofline of the main house is hipped, which means it's got multiple angles, and it has dormers. So it's a very busy roofline. And I think of standing seams as stripes. It's like a pinstripe suit. So do you want it to look like a wide lapel, double-breasted, you know, mafioso? Or do you want it to look like, you know?
Yes, no, understood. I was just, I was just commenting on the fact that the standing metal seam suits the front porch, given that there's not as much slope.
I agree.
And you have less options.
I did preserve that.
Well, and you have less options with, I lived in a ranch house with a very minor slope, and you just have less options with what roof you can put on that space, so I understand that. So I just want to get back to the HPRB meeting, where there was the three options, where it was what you had requested, which was asphalt, that, and then there was the two alternatives that they had suggested.
Thanks for refreshing me. I don't recall it.
Yeah, so the two alternatives, it was either approve what you had asked for, which I think one person put a motion forward, and it was not seconded, so that died. And then there was two alternatives. One was standing metal seam, and the other one was these decorative asphalt shingles. So still asphalt shingles, but more decorative, I think, than what you had originally presented to them.
Well, lower quality, lower duration, and in contrast with what's on the breezeway in the garage. What I'm proposing will make a uniform roof material of the three components.
I think a lot of these questions might be answered with the staff's determination, which we can also ask them questions.
I didn't see them in the staff report.
Well, we haven't heard their report this evening, so do you have additional questions, Ms. Baker? It sounds like you do.
Well, so I just, I guess then I would like to understand, because I think what I watched, when I watched the HPRB meeting, and given that we're now at this place where you're appealing this decision, I'm trying to figure out what's a reasonable compromise that meets the needs of the integrity of the HPRB and also, of course, gets you a roof that you can both financially support and that aesthetically works for your house. Because I agree, standing metal seam is not a good fit. It's aesthetically, metal for metal, to me, is not the same. Like for like, should also, has to take into account shape and size.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I agree.
It is not the same as just saying materials are the same. So I would just, my question to you is, I would like to understand, what are you proposing as a potential compromise? So if, is your only solution tonight to approve, the only way you get a win tonight is to approve asphalt shingles? Or is there another option that you can offer to us?
Yeah, no, I've already offered to staff many times.
So just tell us again, though, because now you're here at an appeal.
Right. I think that the dormer angle and shape lends itself to standing seam. I also am totally willing to put snow guards in, which are a historic feature that the Heritage Preservation Review Board tends to smile on.
So you just said standing metal seam?
On the dormer portion, and with the asphalt on the hipped portion, the steeply hipped portion.
But not the decorative asphalt, only the other asphalt? Just asking the question. I just want to understand the applicants.
I think even though that would save me a lot of money, in the short term, it's not going to keep me watertight for the long term, and it's, and it's, no, I'm not...
Is it possible there are decorative asphalt options that are as high quality?
Anything's possible. I won't speak to that. If you've done your homework and found me something that works, great. That's less for me to do. But my preference, I think aesthetically, also would be to have the three different roofs in the same material.
Okay, thank you.
And I am totally open to putting standing seam on the dormers. I think they're a slight angle, they're very simple.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for the appellant?
Okay, I'm happy to return after the staff report.
Okay, sure. I actually had a couple of questions for you. So just to clarify, so when you went to the HPRB, you, did you request, what, I guess, I don't know the right word, but typical asphalt shingles?
No, they're very high-end. They're called architectural and...
Well, that's what I meant, but not the decorative ones, but the architectural asphalt shingle.
Well, you know, decorative is a term of art, so what staff is proposing is a fish scale.
My question is, Ms. Veda, is, did you request the architectural asphalt shingles?
Correct.
Correct, not a metal shingle, which is what we currently have, okay? And what did the HPRB actually decide?
That I should have standing metal seam.
Okay, so, and I'm understanding that your goal is to have the opportunity to fix your roof as soon as possible in a way that you can afford.
Absolutely, absolutely. It is actively leaking. We've had a dry spell. That's mercy... We've had a dry spell that's merciful. But, the next rain, I will use an umbrella on my second story, to occupy my own home.
That's why, I wanted to make sure that I understood what your, your immediate goals are. Okay, are there other questions for the appellant? Okay. All right, well, thank you, and you will get an opportunity to return. I will call on Dave Stromberg, who's zoning administrator, for the staff presentation. And while he's coming up here, can I ask, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Madam Town Attorney, but to remind us what our role is here in an appeal? I'm not sure if we went over that before, but we've had a lot of discussion, just to be sure that we understand what our role is here. Because typically, we're voting yes or no to approve a certain thing, but in an appeal, that is slightly different. Thank you.
On appeal, you are reviewing the decision that was made by the HPRB. It's not deciding, this body is not acting in a capacity to decide from the beginning. It's not a, in trial terms, it's not a de novo appeal. So, you are to review what the, what the HPRB decided, their decision. And, the code tells us, in reviewing the decision, you are to look to the 12 factors, I'm sorry, 11 factors that they considered, which are noted in 78.60, 78-60.3 F1, I believe. In addition to those items, there is one, there's one factor that is included in the guidelines that relates to roofs, where you're not replacing the roof kind for kind. If you find that the HPRB just made the decision incorrectly, then you can either reverse or modify. And, you need to make the finding that there was something that the HPRB did that was not correct, or not according to the guidelines. If you move to remand, of course, you can always affirm, but if you move to remand to the HPRB, then you need to cite something in your motion to remand that explains what was either missing or defective in the record, or the decision that causes you to remand it back to the HPRB for further proceedings.
Okay. And if we were to reverse this decision, where does that lead us?
Because the decision was to, was to substitute material, a reversal would not take you back to approval of asphalt shingles. It would be a total reversal, starting all over again.
With a brand-new application?
With a brand-new application, yes.
Through the whole process again?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, you certainly may.
Madam Town Attorney, if we should modify this, how quickly could the appellant, if she doesn't appeal it, how quickly could she act on a modification?
Well, currently, she has an approved certificate of appropriateness for standing seam. So, if she wanted to do standing seam, she could have done it at any point up until now. If you modify that, change it to another material, she could do it as quickly as she wants to do it.
Thank you.
Or can afford to do it, or can get someone out there, might be the harder thing.
Right. So, the, yes. The reason I ask the question specifically about reversal is typically, when something is appealed to us, it is when we get a denial, that the HPRB has denied what the applicant wants, and they would come and say, I appeal that, and if we reverse it, then you get what you want. But, I wanted to be clear that this is a little different, that that's not what would happen with a reversal. So, we've got to think through what decision we may make here. Is there, is there any other questions before we? Mr. Stromberg is patiently waiting for us. Mr. Stromberg is our zoning administrator, and we are anxiously awaiting your staff report. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel and members of the council. So, I'm going to walk you through a timeline of the events that led us to this point. I'll provide you with the options that are available to you as the town council. And then, I will try to answer any questions. And if I'm not able to, I have the staff member who worked on the original staff reports to the HPRB, and then the chair of the Heritage Preservation Review Board here as well. So, the application for a certificate of appropriateness was submitted on July 15th of this year. And, a certificate of appropriateness is required anytime someone proposes to significantly alter an existing structure that is within the Heritage Preservation District, which this structure is. And, a certificate of appropriateness wouldn't be required to go to the board if it's like-for-like replacement, only when you're proposing a change. So, the application stated that the roof has had a history of leaking since the appellant purchased it in 1991. And, the request was to remove the existing metal shingles and replace them with the architectural asphalt shingles. The application did not include any pictures or assessments of what kind of damage is being caused by the roof currently. This is not a requirement to include in your package, but typically, when leaks have been pretty bad, a lot of people do include that. The community development staff did review the application and prepared a staff report for the August 7th HPRB work session meeting. And, the key takeaway is from that original HPRB staff report, is that a roof, including the shape, texture, and material, is a key defining feature of any structure within the district. And, the most appropriate roof replacement for this structure, according to the Secretary of the Interior Standards and the Heritage Guidelines, would be a like-for-like replacement of the stamped metal shingles. And, the other thing mentioned in the report is just that the presence of metal roofs within the district overall has slowly been declining over time. After that work session, staff did prepare an updated memo, and that memo is dated August 16th, and that's Exhibit 3 in your package. And, the memo included the two alternatives that could still meet the Heritage Preservation Guidelines. They weren't the most appropriate option, but they still met the guidelines and would satisfy those. And so, one alternative was the standing seam metal panels. And, the board has approved the metal shingle replacement with metal panel replacements in some previous cases, because the metal panels and the metal shingles were both similar and pretty common in the buildings that were being constructed in Herndon around that time. So, the other alternative was the decorative asphalt shingles. And, this is obviously a change in the roofing material from what exists, but they are now produced in such a way that it matches and kind of mimics the size, shape, and relief and pattern of the original shingles. And, they do have a lower cost compared to the metal alternatives, such as the stamped shingles or the standing seam panels. So, these were presented to the appellant during the work session and the public hearing. There wasn't really any indication of being amenable to those staff alternatives at that time. So, during the public hearing on August 21st, 2019, the HPRB did approve a certificate of appropriateness with the condition that the standing seam metal panels did have to be used. And then, on August 23rd of 2019, an appeal of the board's decision was filed with the department. The grounds for the appeal were not specified at that time that the appeal was filed. So, under the provisions of Section 78-60.3 G7 of the zoning ordinance, you, the council does have five alternatives available. You can affirm the decision of the HPRB. You can reverse the decision of the HPRB. You can modify the decision. You can remand the decision back to the HPRB for further discussion, or you can continue the public hearing to a future meeting of the town council for further discussion and debate here at the town council level. So, at this point, if the appellant would still be agreeable to the decorative asphalt shingles, staff is recommending that the council modify the certificate of appropriateness to allow the roof to be replaced with those decorative asphalt shingles. And, that will be in accordance with Alternative 3B in your draft resolution that was prepared. This does still comply with the Heritage Guidelines and does help to reduce some of the cost burden. And, for some of the comments that were made by the appellant earlier, when picking those shingle types, staff tried to use the same manufacturer of the architectural asphalt shingles. And, for any type of asphalt shingle, there's a range of quality. The architectural versus decorative is just a different style type, and then, within those categories, there is a variety of price ranges and quality and guarantees that you can get with those. And, that concludes my report.
So, could I ask a question about your last comment? That you said the staff tried to use the same manufacturer when looking for this decorative option. Were you able to use the same manufacturer?
I believe one of the asphalt decorative ones in the staff memo was certainties, which I think was the same, the initial type of asphalt shingle that the appellant had requested by that manufacturer.
And, is, I'm guessing, I just want to clarify what you just said. I think what you said was, in any type of shingle or asphalt shingle, there are varying degrees of quality, which the purchaser can choose.
Quality and price, yes.
Quality and price. And, so when staff recommends, are you recommending a particular quality and price? Or, are you recommending a style?
We are recommending a style.
Okay. I wanted to, okay, thank you. Ms. Friedrichs, this is time for questions of staff.
So, the appellant seems to have taken against the style that you showed.
Your microphone, I don't think is lost.
The appellant doesn't seem to care for the, for the design that you showed, and I'm wondering if there's a range that is acceptable to the HPRB? Or is it just that one that was visible in the report?
Again, one of the reasons why that one was chose was to try and mimic the shape and style of the existing roof, and also to have some differentiation between the addition that was added, because that addition was built at a different time. So, you want to recognize that they were built at different times, and not have a perfectly seamless pattern going from the existing house from the 1900s to the new addition.
But, the pattern that she currently has on her stamped tin roof, if, if that's what that is, is, is linear, not sort of triangular. Is there a linear version that is acceptable, that more closely mimics what she currently has?
Let Mr. Garcia answer that question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Chris Garcia, I'm the community design planner and the staff liaison assigned to the Heritage Preservation Review Board. To answer some of your questions, I'm going to back up a little bit about the idea behind these decorative and dimensional, we call them also dimensional, you may see these in the market, asphalt shingles we are recommending as an alternative that may be a little bit more feasible, feasible for property owners in this district. The idea is that, as the guidelines state, that the roof is a very much a character-defining feature. In many cases, we feel like it's a decorative, decorative feature on the, the architecture within the town, particularly, we call it contributing structures, which this one is within the district. While it might not be the exact shape or size of what that panel, that metal panel may have been, it still gives the emphasis that the roof was an important feature at some point. The unique thing about Herndon is that we have a high concentration of these metal shingle roofs. There's only one other that I can find readily in a historic district, and that's the Maywood District in Arlington County, which they are very strict about their, their metal roofs. So, we've offered this as, not necessarily a identical shape of asphalt shingle, but one that symbolizes the decorative nature of the roofs that we do have in Herndon. So, that's why we've offered that as a, as a different look at the way to interpret the guidelines and still maintain that feature, that prominent feature that we think is really important to these structures. Did that answer your question?
So, what you're saying is, that's the only one that you really suggest?
There's, there are several different designs that we can work with the applicant or the appellant on to find one that might, that she might be happy with, and still achieve some of the goals that we're trying to achieve with this alternative recommendation.
And when I, thank you. And when I called over earlier today, I got prices on all the four different kinds of roofing that Ms. Knoll could use. And if I, if it's okay, I'll tell you what they are, if that's all right with you all. Madam Town Attorney?
Well, I think we're asking for evidence from the staff, or questions of the staff. I don't know where the information came from.
Okay, can you tell me what those prices are?
Well, I'll have to, I can, and again, it's not to stray too far from the, the question, which is to determine whether the, the board exercised their authority correctly in, in adhering to not only the review standards in the zoning ordinance, but the guidelines. But, I'll get to your question, is that there...
So, let's, let's let the mayor out that.
Thank you. Do you have other questions besides, I don't think it's an appropriate time to list out pricing, but there will be, there will be a time for that in our discussion. Are there other questions to clarify with the staff?
And just to reiterate, you say that the quality of these is, is the same as the certainties roof that Ms. Knoll...
It comes, it comes from the same manufacturer that the appellant's original application has. There are a number of providers out in the market that do provide these types of, of shingles, and so, they may vary. But, the quality is generally going to be the same in asphalt. Obviously, when you get to a metal of some sort, that's going to be, will last a lot longer, as you've seen with this particular roof, which is probably running at 75 to 100 years in age. So, obviously, the time span and the quality of the asphalt shingle is going to be less, but they would be of the same, similar quality of what the appellant has proposed in her original application.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Yes, sir?
So, just, just so we're all clear. So, the original roof cannot be reproduced today.
That's not correct. There are asphalt, or metal shingles in the market that exist today, that can be reproduced that are very similar, but are constructed and assembled in much the same manner as they were when this roof was actually...
Similar, but not exact.
They wouldn't be an exact, but they would have the same...
So, it would be within the spirit of the guidelines?
That'd be the most appropriate designed solution to this problem.
So, cost aside, it would get you pretty close?
Yes.
Just to clarify, you're talking about the metal shingles?
Correct.
Yes, the metal shingles would be the most appropriate and be the most similar, it would not be an exact match, but the very similar profile could be found to almost mimic that.
If people have the ability, it's okay.
Yes, and it's been accomplished, and it's been accomplished historically in this district here.
Really from a design standpoint.
Correct. And, I'll get to the economic feasibility point later. So, it's within the spirit, was the applicant's request within the spirit? Guideline aside, was it within the spirit of what the original roof look and feel shingles were like?
The appellant's application, in staff's opinion, was not. The material that was requested is something that we've been, we have been approving, but for non-contributing structures, that is, the more modern or buildings that fall outside of the district's period of significance.
Okay, so let me, let me double-click on that. So, are there those types of asphalt shingles on roofs in the district? In the town?
In, in the town, there are. In the district, on non-contributing structures that have been approved lately, yes, but not on the contributing structures that, similar to Ms. Knoll's, we'd have not, there are, has been one or two were occasions, but were, I believe there are two cases, at least one that I know of on a house, and it may have been an after, after the fact process where somebody put the roof on first, and then it was, and then, then without a permit. But, those aside, one-off cases aside, by and large, all these, on these contributing structures, the town has been consistent about replacing roofs with metal shingles or standing seam metal roofs in cases like this, this application before you.
But, we've done one-offs?
Not by, not by the board's action.
So, to clarify, is 631 Oak Street a contributing structure?
It is.
And, did you say asphalt shingles have been approved for non-contributing structures?
Non-contributing, they have been. This project that's being requested, we have approved for non-contributing structures.
Has, has it been approved for contributing structures?
This particular one has not. In, in the past, there are a couple of instances where an asphalt shingle ended up on a roof, and it wasn't, some of it for additions. They did, they, it may have been a single-story structure, the applicant requested a pop-up, and they had a asphalt shingle.
But, this is the original part of the house, so...
Yeah, but this is the original part of the house.
Ms. Gilrenas would like to chime in, I believe. Ms. Gilrenas would like to chime in, I believe.
Thank you. Give you a little bit of history. When it comes to the original part of a contributing structure, there was one case where an asphalt shingle was allowed, and that's the case on Wood Street. It's known as the Lawrence case. And what happened during that case was that it was a house that was suffering extreme damage. Evidence, as I remember, this is going back to 1996, evidence, as I remember, was provided to the board concerning the type of damage that was occurring in the house. And the house at that point was so damaged that Fairfax County Housing Department had actually come in to look at possibly helping the owner and inhabitant because the house was really on its kind of last legs due to the roofing problem. So Fairfax County Housing had come in, they determined due to various circumstances that they were not able to provide that assistance. And when the HPRB decided that case, the HPRB said that the asphalt shingle did not meet the guidelines for a contributing structure. It went to the town council, and what the town council said was that, that the concern, the primary concern was that they were going to lose the contributing structure altogether because of the fact that there was so much significant damage and.
So the too-long-don't-read is, it couldn't with, it couldn't, it would crumble under the weight of a, of a metal roof was some of the concern?
Well, no, it was that Fairfax County had even looked at it, and because of the extreme financial, in this case, it was a financial consideration. There was no way to, for this person, due to the extreme financial straits, to even obtain assistance from Fairfax County Housing. And I don't want to go into all the details of it, but.
I don't think it's necessary.
The house, the ceiling were caving in, and the condition was so extreme that it was possible that the entire contributing structure was going to get, be lost. And so, for that reason. They also said that in the motion, or in the resolution, that the house had already had new material placed on it instead of the original wall fabric, exterior fabric. It had been replaced, I believe, prior to the district occurring. It had been replaced with a modern material for the, for the exterior walls.
Did that answer what you were trying to get at?
Yes, it explains why these metal roofs are declining, so, but yes, thank you.
Were the, were these decorative asphalt shingles available in 1996 when that case came before the board?
No, they were not that I am aware of, and I don't think we've known of these until relatively recently. And what they do is they create a pattern and a shadow line that is more akin to the metal shingles of the past and the current ones as well.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any additional questions, Mr. DeGugula, right now? Not for staff, okay. Are there additional questions from the council for staff at this time? Madam Vice Mayor?
So you said that the applicant had been having damage since 1991 on leaking?
That was what was in the application submitted to the staff.
Okay, so this didn't just happen in the last three to six months?
From what the application said, it stated that she was having problems with leaking since 1991.
Okay, how about when the porch roof was changed out, were there leaking problems then, was?
That information I don't have.
Okay.
Okay, we can ask the appellant when she comes back.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Did you have one? Sure. I don't know if that's appropriate now or not, now I will defer to the town attorney.
Well, looking at it in terms of what factors you are to look at, I don't know exactly what pricing you're talking about. Whether or not it was considered by the board would be appropriate. I don't know whether this is, what, at what point the pricing came into, is it something that was looked up today or when the board was looking at it?
So the next, if we have no more questions for staff, the next person to call on to speak is the chair of the Heritage Preservation Review Board, who can tell us more about what happened that night from their perspective and may have those answers. And then, following that discussion, we will open the public area for comments from the audience. And after that, the appellant gets to come in and have the last word after you've heard all of the testimony from everyone. So keep a list. Good evening, sir.
Madam Mayor and council, I am Robert Walker, Chair of the Heritage Preservation Review Board. I live in the town at Submonad Old Huntway. First, I would like to commend Ms. Knoll for at least filing this application. This, for a change, was not a forgiveness application. She actually came before she replaced her roof. But I think we, we tried, I think we did follow the guidelines and consider what we should have considered. There were numbers thrown about, they were pretty much naked numbers. There were no certified estimates or anything like that sort. And so we did, in that sense, consider the, the money. The staff in this case went above and beyond. They did a lot of research on these, on what materials are available for roofs. I think as technology's coming along, the, the council, before my tenure on the board, had approved hardy plank as replacements for wood siding. I don't know if the staff totally agrees with me on this, but I think that somewhere down the road, there's going to be a, an analogous sort of a thing for roofs. And these newest shingles that Mr. Garcia came up with, which mimic the, the line, the shade lines and the, and the shape of, of the, of the metal roofs, may well be that product. It may need some more, there may be more perfection as time goes on. And the standing metal that was approved here, or at least I thought we were approving, there are, you can have various heights of those seams. And what was recommended here was that they be, I think the architects used the term tamped down. Basically, they're turned down, so they're much, much smaller than, than the typical standing metal or the standing seam. And we tried to work with Ms. Knoll on, on that. And as, this is, you asked, was this historic building? It's, I don't know if it's a historic building, but it's a contributing structure under the, the definitions of within the guidelines. And as, as staff report points out, the roof is maybe the most, most important part on a house. You can change the, the decking on a porch, even the wood paneling on the, on the outside of the wall from the street, may not be all that visible. A roof is not like that. A roof is always visible. And so I think we tried, we did what we should have done with the consideration. And ultimately, in a, in a way that this application demonstrates is, either you want a preservation district or you don't. I mean, it's, yes, it's a hardship in some, in some terminology, but it's preservation. There, it's shrinking here in the town. We, we get demolition applications for outbuildings, which outbuildings people think, but they're, they're quite a, an important thing, and, and they're deteriorating, and, and our inventory of that sort of thing is, is vastly reduced from what it once was. And I'd be happy to answer any questions I can.
I'll start with Mr. McKenna. I think it's been a while since he heard from you.
I, I think I just have one question. I think it actually pertains to, I guess you can say, the close of discussion and move to vote. I think, and even, I think there's some confusion during the, during the meeting when the decision was made, the, it was approved, I think the applicant, there was some confusion about what was approved and why. So I think, just for, you know, I guess you can say, posterity's sake, I think it's important to ask what was approved and, you know, why we're here.
Yeah. I appreciate that after the fact to a, to a degree. I thought, at least in my mind, we were denying the, the application as presented, but allowing the standing seam.
So, so my question, I wasn't going to go next, but it kind of dovetails with what you're talking about. If, when the applicant came in, she asked for asphalt, correct?
Correct.
And the staff recommend, or, I don't want to, I might say the wrong thing, but in the alternatives that this, that were in the staff report to consider were either like-for-like material, which was standing seam metal, or a decorative asphalt option, which was not exactly what she had asked for, but was a.
Right.
Sort of a compromise. So, and the, the board did not decide to go with that option?
No, that was.
Was there a reason? I mean, was a reason articulated?
Well, we took a vote. No, there was no reason that I can recall that was articulated. Each of us gave it our consideration and thought that, at that stage of the proceeding, that the standing metal was the, the best solution. Well, to some degree, this was, this, the, this decorative asphalt is a very new product. And there was some question, and Ms. Knoll was, was obviously resistant to it. So that may have factored in, at least to some people.
Okay.
But I, you know, everybody had their own, just like you do in here, you have your own reasons for doing it.
Sure. Mr. to call in, we haven't heard from you in a while, and then I'll just come back this way.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker, thanks for coming. My one question, the HPRB guidelines, when were those guidelines established? And do you recall when it was last revised?
They were established in 1985, 87?
Late 80s, for sure.
Late, 89, finally. And they're under, there's a, I think you've issued a contract to, and, and the process has begun, to, to resurvey and to update the guidelines.
We're anticipating in the coming months, having a draft to review, so.
It's been a, a long project, I will grant you. But it's a, but it's a big, to redo them, the company had to go out and look at all the houses and make whatever.
It's a long process.
So it's a, it's not a snap kind of a decision. It's not just, just look at the language and, and clean it up, as it were. It's, it's a much bigger project than that.
Okay, Ms. Baker, or did you, you didn't have a question? I'm sorry. I can't keep up. Who else? Mr. DeGugula?
First of all, thank you for what you and the committee are doing. I, I appreciate that. This council appreciates your time on that. It's not always fun. I'm going to ask you just, you, you brought it up, so I need to kind of understand. Section 11, paragraph 3, the roof replacement and reconstruction, it actually says, and if you can't answer it, that's fine, I respect that, but what does it mean for using substitute material may be used if the same kind of material is not technically or economically feasible? I mean, and that's, the reason I'm asking that, because I think it speaks to the, sort of the vision or the, the approach. So again, nothing binding, I just kind of want to understand.
I think it gets to exactly what we did, that, as Mr. Garcia said just a bit ago, the, in effect, like-for-like would have been more metal shingles. The standing seam is a, is a different product, but is appropriate as a replacement, we thought. And, and these newer decorative shingles may be, may also be. We don't have enough, I'm not sure we have enough information on them yet.
And, and do, I don't want to ask the, the question the way I thought about it, but how much is the financial burden considered in that, in that context?
I don't think the guidelines tell us financial burden. That's not the language.
But it is a burden.
It is, but buying a house in that district is a, is a burden. I mean, you know that going, you should know that going in.
I was never, I was never.
Excuse me, point of order.
No, and, and again, the reason I'm asking is because I, I've had a lot of people send me letters and send us letters and just catch us on the street, hey, you need to help us address this. So I'm good, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Walker?
Thank you for the thanks, we're happy to serve.
I think that the vice mayor hasn't gotten to go yet. She's patiently waited.
Oh.
Sorry.
Excuse me. I know when I watched the meeting several times, because I like to go back and watch it in case I didn't remember it correctly. And I know that there was a term used about being not financially feasible and.
A term used by whom? Or just in the discussion?
During the discussion.
I think that's the, that's the guideline language.
And then I know the individual that's our architect on there was trying to get at, were there other quotes? You know, what can you, can you give us some comparisons? So is that normally how you would get at?
Yes. The court told us that we need to consider the economics of it. And that's sort of what we did. We didn't have anything, there wasn't any evidence of any of that, but we thought about what we could of it. I've forgotten, there was something, you raised something I was going to say, and it's gone completely out of my mind. Old age stinks.
About feasibility or the?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't so funny. It was, it'll occur to me at 3:00 this morning, I'm sure.
Just give me a call so you can tell me what it is. So normally, when someone comes in, because I don't watch these every week, every month, do they come in with quotes to give you an idea of what's out there? Or is it up to the board to go out and find the quotes and tell the applicants what they need to use?
Mostly, it's, people come in with a quote with, on letterhead and with what, the, the description of what they're estimating to do. Although I know what it was. We can't, the other thing with these is, I don't think we're, you can, you're not comparing apples to apples when you're looking at the gross numbers, because the roofs don't all have the same life. So these, these metal roofs have 75 to 100 years. The asphalt has 20 to 25 at best. So it's, do you pay me now or do you pay me later kind of a, kind of a deal in a way? And so you can't just look at the, I don't think you can just look at the gross numbers and say, that's not, that's not fair and that's not appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I will say that I have a newer home. It is not in the historic district, and it has architectural shingles. And during a couple of really bad storms, I had leaks. So it's not airtight or watertight. I had someone come in to make sure it didn't leak again, but there was nothing wrong with it. It was just, when you have horrendous weather, it's not going to work.
There's very little perfection in the world.
Right. Additional questions for Mr. Walker?
Yes. Have you ever had a case where someone came in and had some type of financial issue during your term? I'm not asking about the history of Herndon or the HPRB.
We did have an application a few years ago where, that went to the circuit court. And when I said the court told us, that's the decision I was referring to, because at that one, there was nothing in the record about money. And so it said, you've got to consider. And so it said, you've got to consider the finances. It didn't tell us what, what level of consideration that is, what you've got to do, and what you require, that you've got to consider it. And I think in this case, we did, we considered it and decided that the standing seam was the best alternative.
Is the standing seam less expensive than the tiles?
Than the metal?
Oh, yes.
Shingles, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, the like, the exact like-for-like is the most expensive process.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Walker? Ms. Baker?
Yes. So, I know this is what Vice Mayor Olin was just asking, but it sounds like we don't have an answer to the question of who's responsible. Since with roofs, there is the piece that says financial consideration within the guidelines, it doesn't seem like it's clear whose responsibility is it to put that information forward, whether it's the applicants or staffs?
Well, I think in legal terms, the applicant has the burden of proof.
Of proof. Okay. Right, so the applicant certainly should have, it would be best practices for an applicant, in this case, or future cases, to, particularly with roofs, because that's the only place in our current guidelines, right? We'll see what our future guidelines look like, where that's listed. And then my other question is just, so again, given that there was these, the accepted-as-is, and then the two alternatives, watching the HPRB meeting, it seemed like after the first one was essentially not seconded, your vice chair made the motion for the one alternative, and then the other one seems like it wasn't discussed at all. So my question is just, was it, do you remember if it was discussed during the work session? And I'm asking this because, you know, it sounds like, what I feel like here is, there's just a gap with the, a conversation with the applicant, right? Of what would be a feasible alternative? Because we all want folks to keep up their homes, whether they're in the historic district or outside the district, right? It's in everyone's best interest, and certainly the applicant's best interest. So, it just feels like that alternative was offered, the board, you know, approved that five to one. So during the work session, was it, hey, we're going to have these two alternatives? Was that discussed in the work session?
Actually, I think that newer decorative came up as a result of the research that the staff did after the work session.
Okay.
And there was, at the, at the public hearing, there was, there was considerable discussion between staff and the applicant about those things, those kinds of shingles, and what they were.
That's actually really helpful to know. So it does feel like it, and I think sometimes in these meetings, and we certainly know this from sitting up here, sometimes it's hard to make these kind of decisions. Work sessions, like if folks come to these and we don't talk enough, it's because we have so much conversation in a work session. So once you're up here, it's hard to really dig into those. So that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
I think we didn't discuss that third alternative among ourselves-
Right.
-because of the discussion that had gone on between the applicant and staff.
And staff. But the board, who actually makes the decision, didn't really focus on that. Thank you.
So if you're in the audience wondering, like, dear God, is this not a lot of talking in an appeal? We cannot discuss it in the work session. So we are doing all the talking up here, right? This is really unusual. I hope you will come back to another meeting one day and see that it's not always like this.
Well, my, I noticed-
They have a sale sign in their yard next week, we'll know why.
I noticed that my red light is on.
I think everybody's red light's on. Is there anyone who has not asked a question, that has a question for Mr. Walker? And I can't keep up with who, so I'm just trusting you guys. Is there anyone that has another question for Mr. Walker? Because we still have another round to go through. Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next, this is a public hearing. So I will call for comments from the audience. If there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak on this appeal, and your opinion on what action the council may wish to take, this is your opportunity. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am?
I'm back. Actually, I didn't go anywhere. I'm Ralston Presley. I live at 134 Pearl Street, which happens to be across the street from the appellant's home.
Oh, yeah.
And I will tell you that I have the pleasure of looking at her house every day. I do know how hard she has worked to maintain this home, and now, as she mentioned, she's doing it basically on her own. I would appeal to you to grant her request. I think it's imperative. I do believe it's important to mention that we all know what it takes to be a homeowner. I tell people all the time, it's not what it's cracked up to be. It's very expensive. And even in this town, as we have seen the costs of living here rise, just in the three years that I've been here, I know my property certainly has risen in its value, and I like that, and I know I have to maintain it, but I also know that the major costs that come along once in 25 years can be quite a difficult thing to do. So I would like for you to consider that as well. Because down the road, not all of us are millionaires. We can't all afford to put into the kinds of historic district. Don't get me wrong, I think it's beautiful, it's wonderful, but I do know that there are products out there that can mimic what you have now, and I do hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this appeal? So seeing none, I will give the appellant the opportunity to come forward for rebuttal or further comments.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. There was one other member of the audience whose babysitter called her home, so, on my behalf, but anyway.
I remember those days.
Yeah, that's speculation, so. Anyway, this evening's the first I've heard of the request for photos of damage or certification of pricing. I repeatedly asked staff what more they needed. I mean, at every juncture, I wanted this to be as helpful and as complete as possible. I'd be happy to provide photos. Next rainfall, I'll bring a bucket, you know? I have plenty of evidence, and all you need to do is ask. Councilman Fredericks pointed out that the fish scale rounded or snip-cornered style asphalt shingles have no resemblance to the rectangular punch tin shingles. Certain Teed manufactures a huge range of qualities. Their lowest is called builder's grade, and they go on up to lifetime and, lifetime and beyond, you know? What I would call the decorative, they said, what did they call it? Texture, dimensional. The dimension is actually in the rounding of the corners. The architectural that I'm proposing is dimensional from the roof. It actually casts shadows. It has a texture. It is a higher quality, and it is more expensive, and I think it gives a richer look. It casts shadows. On Florence Place 631 is the only of the three contributing structures that remain salvageable. I hope to preserve it. The other two are failed because of roofing issues, and their ceilings, like Ms. Lawrence's, are falling in. They are not salvageable. The town of Herndon has lost the Emery Residence and the Orr Residence for eternity, and it is because of roofing. No realtor, no financial institution, and there were plenty of opportunities in the amount of time, the numbers that we refied. And more importantly, no town representative ever informed me of the heritage burden of this ownership. At no time was I notified. I have obviously learned, but through my own initiative, not through any official, and I do not believe that the town has, to this day, a process in place to inform unwitting homeowners of the burden that the town is imposing on them. I'm grateful for the Circuit Court decision. I was unaware of that. That's great news. And I, you know, I hope I don't have to go that route. Standing seam, just, this is just apropos of, this is information for you all, but standing seam is only marginally less expensive than new metal shingles. The delta is dwarfed by the differential between asphalt and metal. That's the real differential here, and that's what we're talking about. I'm ready to answer any more questions.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I still would like to hear why you're appealing the decision of the HPRB, not your personal-
Yeah.
Because I am a single person, living on my own. I do all my work. I just need to, and we're the same age. I just need to know, what is the appeal?
Yeah, no, I find it all mind-boggling, confusing, and I'll try to answer the best I can. An application that I had no party to was approved. And so I don't even know if appeal is the right word. I am asking for help to get a roof, but I don't, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry. I don't understand what happened to me. I don't understand the process at all. And I thought appeal was my only recourse to this approval.
It is the correct course of action.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thanks. The mayor agrees.
I agree with the process.
So at this point, you do have two options. One is to do the stamped shingles, and the other is to do the single seam.
I don't believe I have a certificate of appropriateness for the metal shingles. But I also don't have the means. So.
Other questions for the appellant? Okay. Thank you. So I will close the public hearing if there's no further comment from the audience. I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Do I need to have the town attorney remind us our options? Are we clear on our options? Okay. All right. Just making sure, I'm sorry. So I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move we affirm-
Whoa. I believe I heard the Vice Mayor first, so.
Madam Mayor, I move we affirm the decision of the HPRB.
Which would mean standing seam as was suggested. It upholds the decision.
Which would mean that I don't, I have not heard anything that the HPRB did wrong. So I'm affirming-
Your decision.
Okay. And in the event the, well, that's what I'm saying.
There is a motion on the floor to affirm the decision of the HPRB made by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
I will second for discussion and substitution.
Hold on. I'm making a list, because I have a feeling we're going to be here awhile. So, we have a motion to affirm made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Discussion on the motion, I do want to give everyone a heads up, because I think there may be several motions that we entertain. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on each one, just so that it's clear where we are. I don't want to spring that on you. So, Madam Vice Mayor, comments on the motion to affirm?
Yes. I don't see anything that the HPRB did inappropriate, which is usually why you're appealing things to the town council. In the event the applicant, the appellant doesn't want to put a shingle, stamped shingle, or a single seam, they can always go back to the HPRB. But I don't think, as a council member, I've not studied this to this point that the members of the HPRB have. I know staff had made other recommendations, the appellant did not like any of those. So I don't want to impose another thing on the applicant, that they, or appellant, that they may turn around and say, now they made us do something. And I also would hate for the other people in town to see this as a reason to go back to court, like the one that-
The previous one.
We talked about, because we overturned the HPRB, and then it ended up in court, and now they have a single seam roof. And it was a lot of to-do about, so.
So it did go to the court. So to clarify for the audience, if whatever decision is made by this body this evening the appellant is unhappy with, the next step is to appeal our decision to the Circuit Court, and that's what happened previously on a different case.
No. The appellant, the individual didn't, other people that lived in historic homes, who had been taking care of their home, were not happy that they've been taken care of.
You're correct. But the next step for an appeal of this decision is to the Circuit Court. It doesn't come back to us, it doesn't go back to the HPRB for this decision.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
And just the same, as with this historic overlay district, we have HOAs in town that have architect review boards. And I've heard people say they don't want to have to use the materials that their architectural review board wants them to use. We've got a couple of people here that live on, in Fort Knightly Square. They have their own guidelines and the types of materials you can use. I don't live in an HOA. I live down the street in Herndon Woods. But I do have the type of asphalt shingles that this individual had asked for, and they don't make my house look historic at all. They're not historic shingles. So, there we go.
So, the motion was made by the Vice Mayor to affirm. Did the seconded want to comment next, and then we'll-
Yeah, I seconded the motion, because what I think is actually going on here is probably just a misalignment and communication situation. I was looking for material evidence from the applicant. It was a little bit thin, but having that been said, what was interesting was the staff report in regards to the applicant, as well as what Mr. Walker said. And I do think that there is some, and that's why I wanted to open this discussion, because I think there is some evidentiary things that came into play that could modify, you know, could change the stance. And I just want to make sure, obviously, we're doing this right by the applicant, and also by the body, because we have an obligation to follow the letter to law. So I seconded this, just because I do think that a discussion on this is important, based upon what was stated by staff and by Mr. Walker.
So the motion on the floor is to affirm. Is there further comment on affirming this decision, or other comments? Mr. Delagula?
So-
Ms. Fredericks.
I want to say that I understand that we don't want to tell the HPRB, or even imply that they didn't do it correctly, but I do feel that they made an error in not allowing the option of, despite the fact that Ms. Knoll didn't want it anyway, but not allowing that much less expensive asphalt option. Because that, as Ms. Baker has pointed out a number of times, is a way of satisfying the HPRB requirements, and also making it more affordable, much more affordable, for Ms. Veda. So, can I make a, do I have to wait for Mr. McKenna's motion to be, okay?
I'm hearing a possible substitute motion?
Yes. I would like to make a substitute motion and modify the decision of the HPRB upon a finding of evidence in the record that the HPRB decision was incorrect, based on the review standards in Section 78-60.3-F, as follows: "To approve decorative asphalt shingles as recommended by staff."
Okay. Let me make sure I'm getting this correct. So we have a substitute motion that she said very formally, which basically says changing, modifying the decision to be the decorative asphalt single and not the standing seam single. And it was seconded by Mr. Delagula. Is that correct? Is that what I heard? Okay. Discussion on the motion.
Just clarification in regards to, I don't know if that was an incorrect decision, because didn't they make the decision predicated upon those three criteria? I think that's, that's in regards to when they approved. Did they approve? That's why I was, I'm just asking a question of staff and also attorney. When, so what I'm asking for everyone to understand, when it was affirmed, was it affirmed specifically for the one piece of material, or were there three other materials that were associated with that, along with the-
Well, I think the decision speaks for itself. It says it substitutes a material for her application. It did not substitute, you know, just a substitute material. So I would see that if this body finds that there was something wrong with the decision, then that would certainly support a motion to modify.
Okay. Just, I wanted to get clarification on the wording, that's all.
Okay, so there is a substitute motion on the floor to, to modify the decision and substitute standing seam with the decorative asphalt shingle. Made by Ms. Fredericks, seconded by Mr. Delagula. So that is the motion we are discussing now. If this motion passes, then that becomes the decision. If this motion fails, we go back to the original motion, which is to affirm.
Okay.
Clear as mud? No?
It's good.
Discussion on the motion.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
I would like to talk, give the motion maker and seconded the opportunity first, if they are interested- If they are interested, if you are not so inclined, we can move on.
Because I want to make a friendly amendment.
I'm not entertaining a friendly amendment. No, it gets too muddied. I'd rather do a total substitute. So can we, can we wait on that for a second?
Okay.
Then I'll do a substitute. Okay.
So what I see, aside from the fact that we're trying to decide whether or not the HPRB made the decision correctly, as a council member, I see our goal as to both uphold the requirements of the historic preservation guidelines and also serve the public, including the individual. And although I know Ms. Veda does not like the option that I'm proposing, it is much less expensive and there are some varieties of, and it's watertight, and there are lots of different ways that it can be designed. I hope that this will, this is a compromise. It's not a perfect answer, but it's a compromise. So I have called all over the state today. I have asked people if there's grant money available to help Ms. Veda offset the cost of her repairs. I have spoken with the Virginia Department of Historical Resources. I have checked HUD website. I have looked at different versions of houses that are like hers. I have looked at her house so many times that her neighbor on Florence Place came out and pointed at me in his bathroom. So I hope that this will work. So that's my motive, and I hope that didn't go on too long, and I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Delagula.
So again, for the purpose of the discussions, I want to support this in the broader sense. We're making a modification or we're making a change. I think what we're forgetting here, folks, is the real human element here. I mean, we spent hours on housing. And how do we, as a council, address the increasing demands of housing, not just for people that are going to be coming here, as far as workforce and affordable, but how do we help people age in place so they're not having to live with a leaky roof, with moldy conditions? What we're forgetting are these are guidelines. HOA guidelines, HPRB guidelines. These are not hard laws. We're in an executive role where we can say, hey, for the future benefit, perhaps we ought to do something a little different, or suggest we do something different. And I don't want to get into someone's personal financial background. We kind of need to take someone's word for it, that doing this, although you think it's affordable, it's like the affordable housing. It's affordable only to the individual who thinks it's affordable. So maybe a $20,000, $30,000, $50,000 delta isn't a big ding, big thing for some of us, but that's a lot of money. And I think when we're looking at this, I want us to step back and just examine that human element, what we're doing long term. I know we're going to be making changes to these guidelines. And I'm not sure I understand what the aversion is to using, this is an example, or how we might incorporate or include more people that are going to be in this situation. These roofs are kind of coming to their end of life cycle anyway, as was commented before. I wrote it down. Metal roofs are diminishing. Well, why is that?
Because they're old. They're all 100 years old.
Right. But people are replacing them with other stuff.
Not always. But I guess my question is, are you supporting the motion?
I'm supporting the discussion to further discussion on this.
Okay. Ms. Baker?
So you tell me the process here, but I wanted to make a substitute motion to Ms. Friedrichs' motion. Would you like me to?
Can we just?
Can you just, can I just tell you what it is?
Tell us what you're proposing and then we can figure out.
My suggestion would be, based on what the applicant said in the beginning, and what I feel like, again, thinking about the aesthetics of this historic contributing structure, and also taking into account all the things we've already discussed, my suggestion would be that we request, require standing metal seam for the dormers and the decorative architecture for the rest of the hip part of the roof. That would be my request. So it's actually both those parts.
There are two terms, decorative or architecture?
Decorative shingles.
The two separate ones?
Yes. The decorative shingles.
What I think would be cleaner is to discuss what's on the floor currently, and if that fails, make a substitute motion. Okay. Madam Town Attorney, am I in the weeds? I mean, we're in the weeds. Let's be clear, but.
At this point, we have the, we have the original motion, we have the original substitute motion. I understand that the, that Ms. Baker wanted to make another substitute motion. Your suggestion that we vote on, that you vote on the first substitute motion is fine. You can have another substitute motion on top of a substitute motion, but that would be it. You can have two.
So you can make that substitute if you would like?
Well, here's my.
That's your decision.
I, um.
Love my job. What's your decision?
It could also be, and you said you.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, and could we have, so another option for the substitute motion would be to have the option.
And we'd be in discussion now.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
We were discussing the substitute motion and.
I was just going to say, my substitute motion could also be an or.
The motion maker of the original substitute motion could amend her motion or restate her motion. That would have to be seconded. But that would be up to the chair.
I don't like friendly amendments. It gets us in the weeds and it's very confusing.
We don't have a lot of choices. This is how we have to do these.
Well, we can't talk about them during a work session.
It can be withdrawn. The original motion can be withdrawn.
And restated.
Yes.
If that's something you would want to do.
But I do agree with the mayor that we're getting far afield on Roberts' rules.
Okay. I have one really relevant point.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Point of order. I'm sorry. Point of order.
I'm happy to add.
Your microphone's not on.
Sorry.
This is a very confusing night. I'm happy to add, Ms. Baker's.
Ms. Veda, I'm sorry.
There's a misunderstanding of what I offered.
Okay. I'm sorry. We cannot hear from you right now.
I'd like to clarify before I misquote it. Could my statement be read back to Ms. Baker?
We are at council level. So I would like to modify my substitute motion to read as follows: "To approve decorative asphalt shingles as recommended by staff and..." What's the language? Or, or?
I think it would be cleaner to, if you want to make a total change, I would withdraw the motion that you have put on the floor and make a substitute motion. Is that correct? That would be just cleaner than trying to modify something that's already in existence.
Okay. Because I don't have, I'm not quite sure I understand what Ms. Baker is suggesting.
Would you like to withdraw the substitute motion to replace standing seam with decorative asphalt?
I would do so. I will redraw the heck out of it.
Withdrawn. Okay. This is why I love work sessions, and this is very difficult at the dais. So withdraw my motion. That's withdrawn. And would you like, or someone else like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Delagula.
Okay.
This is a substitute motion.
Yes. So I'd like to modify the current applicant's request.
Are you on?
Yeah. I'd like to offer, we modify the current applicant's request to approve what she originally asked for based upon this not being economically feasible.
So we have to modify the current decision by the HPRB?
Second.
No, no. We don't have a motion on the floor yet.
Yes.
To modern, so you want to modify the current decision to change standing seam to?
What she originally asked for.
The architectural.
That's this.
The architectural asphalt shingles.
Asphalt shingles. Yes.
Madam Town Attorney?
I'm just going to remind the motion maker that a modification pursuant to the town code is only permitted if there is a finding that the decision of the HPRB board was incorrect.
And I believe that.
Okay. So wait a minute. So this is your motion. Is there a second to this motion? I believe I heard one from Mr. DeKalb. Okay. Okay.
Again, this goes back.
Mr. Delagula.
This goes back to my original concern that this is not the first I've heard of this, and it's not going to be the last time we will hear this. The, not, we can't technically reproduce what was there. So then we offer up a bunch of options, and then we say to the applicant, well, here are your choices, you know, good luck, without taking any consideration of what the financial economic impact is on that individual. I just think we need to relook at this entire process. I think going forward, we need to really look at how we're implementing and preserve, or how we're trying to preserve and protect these investments. I think the fact that the town doesn't contribute to, back to these individuals for maintaining this historic dwelling, I think is another concern I have. Again, I just, I'm going from the economic feasibility perspective. I think it was not looked at as deeply as it could have been.
Mr. DeKalb?
I seconded, I seconded this motion, this substitute motion, just because we have to be practical as well. Yes, we always want to preserve the historical district, which is good, which we should be doing, but at the same time, not at the financial burden of the residents. And another thing is, these guidelines, which can be changed, can be amended, were made in 1989. And fast forward, that's the question I asked to Mr. Walker as well. And we are 30 years from 1989, and it has not been changed. In protecting our homeowners, not just buying a affordable house, which we discussed earlier, but how they can stay under their roof, how they can have their maintenance based on their financial condition has to be also considered. And if I'm not mistaken, mistaken, Ms. Veda has indicated here for financial consideration, correct? So that's why I'm supporting this one, substitute motion, because at the end of the day, what we decide here, really, we don't want to impose anything to our residents. Rather, we want to find a solution that fits their financial need, and we make sure they stay within their roof.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
I would like to make a substitute motion.
Can we?
I was told we can do a second substitute motion, so I would like to make a second substitute motion. This is the first one, because she withdrew it. So I'm now making a second substitute motion.
Okay.
Okay. My substitute motion is to modify the decision of the HPRB upon finding evidence record that the HPRB decision was incorrect based on the review standards. Incorrect slash maybe incomplete would be more how I would describe it. And I would like to modify it to approve decorative asphalt shingles or standing metal seam as recommended by staff.
Second.
Hold on. I'm making sure I have this written down. Was that you?
Essentially, yeah.
Yes.
No, that's okay. So we have yet another substitute motion to modify the decision of the HPRB by taking out the words standing seam metal and replacing it with decorative asphalt.
No.
Or standing seam. Giving a choice?
Oh, well.
Giving a choice.
Sorry. You said removing standing metal seam. I was just saying, that or.
Standing seam, or then another way to say it is adding or decorative asphalt shingles.
Correct.
Okay. And that was seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. It would be awesome to vote on one of these one day. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Baker or Ms. Friedrichs?
I think that provides, provides the, to me, the best compromise available while still keeping the integrity of the district. And also, I think the intent of the HPRB, since there were these two options offered and they weren't fully considered, I think this, having a work session at the dais, which is essentially what I witnessed with that, this is, shows how difficult it is. And I think that HPRB meeting, HPRB meeting was a reflection of it is really difficult, and they didn't discuss those, that second option. And I would like that second option to be an option for the appellant.
I agree.
Further discussion on the new substitute motion? I have a question eventually. Mr. Delagula?
I think.
I'll just go last.
Well, that's, you're closing it out. I think I have to go back to, again, your worldview, where you come from. What is appropriate for one person or one group is not necessarily applicable to another group. And I think we're, we're making a lot of assumptions in that, hey, you know, this is less costly than that, or this is, this is within the spirit where that's not. I think the people most qualified, quite frankly, to do that are the homeowners. And if we're going to be making changes to these guidelines, again, guidelines, I think we ought to take this opportunity as an example to lead on what I think will be a better HPRB going forward. And it'll fit within the sort of holistic strategic vision we have for housing throughout the town. I mean, if we're taking, talking about affordable, we're talking about workforce, we're talking about in place, I think we're missing an opportunity here to sort of set a new path.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am.
I watched the meeting. I read through some of the work session materials. And the applicant at the time did not want this type of product because they said they didn't feel it had enough history. I don't know the exact verbiage, but they, they said they didn't want to be the guinea pig. So I'm not sure that we're doing anything similar.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Thank you. But, you know, we've got other things going on in town in the historic preservation area that could come back to the HPRB, such as Van Haven. If someone's windows break and they decide they're going to go with a cheaper one, they had to put special soundproofed windows in that are more expensive. Just like, I'm looking at, you know, my roof probably needs to be replaced, and it's, it's a pretty huge roof as well. And I've been there 20 years. It's probably going to have to be replaced in the next five to seven years. But it's not ten. I wish I had gotten a metal roof because they last longer. So I just don't think I can support just coming up with a whole new set when we haven't set and studied it. I go back to, if you think they needed to work on it more, you can remand it if you, but I just don't see us putting together something to modify with our limited knowledge of products.
So my question with what's on the floor is, is it typical or advisable to give a certificate of appropriateness, still giving some options? Does that happen? Maybe it does. I don't know. Typically, I think, I guess my question is, or is it typically, here's what you should do? Is there, is there any legal or is there an issue with having a certificate of appropriateness with two options like this?
I believe staff would say no.
There is not a legal issue?
It's happened.
It has happened. Okay.
It does give, and this gives a broad range of choices. It's clear what they are, either standing seam or the decorative shingles.
It's clear that the appellant doesn't want standing seam, so I'm not sure why it's helpful to have that still in the motion. But that's what's on the floor. So is there further discussion on the substitute made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, to modify the HPRB decision to add the words or decorative asphalt shingles to the certificate of appropriateness? Is there further discussion on that motion? Okay. Then I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on that substitute. Then I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on that substitute motion. Is it clear what we're voting on?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember De Aguilar?
No.
Councilmember DeKalb?
Nope.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel?
My vote is no. So, that is one, two, three, four. So, that fails. So, we are back to the main motion, which is to affirm the HPRB's decision. Is there discussion on the motion to affirm, which is to allow the roofing, to uphold the decision to allow standing seam metal for the roof replacement? Discussion on the motion. Right. My town attorney looks confused.
Don't we go to the substitute motion?
We go back to the substitute?
This would be.
Oh, you're right.
This would be, this is substitute on top of a substitute. So, we go back to the motion to.
Which was to modify with regular asphalt.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I knew it was going to be like this. So, my apologies. I forgot we were several substitutes in. So, it, the, since that motion failed, we are back to the first substitute motion, which is to modify the HPRB's decision, taking out the words standing seam and replacing them with architectural asphalt shingles. Is that correct? Okay. So, is there discussion on the motion? If not, I can call the question and call the roll.
Call the question.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor is to modify, I'm just going to say it again, because there have been so many, I want to be clear, to modify the HPRB's decision, replacing the word standing seam with architectural asphalt. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Delagar?
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
No.
Councilmember McKenna?
No.
And Mayor Merkel?
No. So, that motion fails, and we are back now to the original main motion, which was made by Vice Mayor and seconded by Mr. McKenna to affirm the HPRB's decision for standing seam metal roof. Discussion on the motion. We can entertain a substitute motion if anyone is interested, correct? Because we're back to the main motion? Because if this fails, we are at no decision.
And that is correct.
It does not mean that it reverts back to asphalt. It means there's no decision, and this, the, it basically, it stands whether this passes or fails. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we, okay, go, sorry.
Madam Mayor?
I would like to modify the decision of the HPRB upon a finding of evidence in the record that the HPR decision was incorrect or incomplete based on the review standards in section 78 dash 60.3F as follows: To approve decorative shingles as recommended by staff or standing seam.
Okay, that's what just failed. Is that what your intent was?
Yes.
You made the motion without stating whether it was a motion to substitute or a motion to reconsider. If.
And I don't think the maker of the motion. Point of order, Madam Mayor.
No, we are, we are back to, there's a, there's a main motion on the floor, so this is a substitute to modify.
So, it's a motion to reconsider.
It's the same motion that has already failed.
Correct.
So, it would, so it would need to be, it would need to be a motion to reconsider by someone.
That's already decided, we can't vote on it again.
We can't vote it on again.
Sorry, I was, I was, I was on a different.
It's late.
That's correct. If you've, if you voted against it and you want to bring up a motion to reconsider, you can, but.
So, that would be Ms. Olum, Mr. Delagula, Mr. DeKalb, or myself, correct? That could bring that up. If you would like to reconsider, it would be a motion to reconsider. Having budget flashbacks.
So, for clarification, because it's late, and.
It is.
What, what would we actually be reconsidering that?
The person would be reconsidering their, their vote on, on the motion, and they're bringing it up again.
But there's no change to the actual motion.
Right.
I think we've already had that discussion. So, if, we are back to the original main motion, which is to affirm.
Well, okay.
Yes.
Then I'll put forward a substitute motion.
Okay.
To modify, to approve, to modify the decision to approve with decorative asphalt shingles as recommended by staff.
Second. I'm running out of room on my paper. So, this was the, okay.
Is there boos at the end of this meeting?
There better be.
For the appropriate vote.
So, the substitute motion on the floor is to, made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, which is to modify the decision of the HPRB, replacing the word standing seam with the words decorative asphalt shingle. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Discussion on the motion.
Yes. My concern is, given that, you know, now knowing, I think, where folks stand on this, I, I think it's important that we have a reasonable compromise that, again, I think, meets the integrity of the district of the HPRB, and making sure that the appellant has a, a house that she can live in that doesn't leak. I also want to, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Okay. Ms. Friedrichs?
Is this on? I'm losing track of reality here. So, I second all of the things that Councilmember Baker has said, and I reflect on the fact that I believe the Historic Preservation District is a vital part of our town. I believe that, well, having spoken with the Historic Resource, the Department of Historic Resources, they tell us that disregarding our regulations puts the entire district at risk, which I do not wish to do. I think that the, the burden and the pleasure, or the, or the benefit of the HPRB is worth it. It's easy for me to say, but I have studied this. I care deeply. I understand how expensive it is. And I believe that the option that Councilmember Baker and I are talking about is about the same price as the option that is not acceptable in the H, the Historic Preservation District. So, my reason is, I believe the cost is about the same, and I think it's important to preserve our district.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Delagula?
How, how are we verifying cost?
I verified it with the staff and sent you the numbers.
Those are the same numbers?
Further discussion? Ms. Olum?
Well, for the record, I do support having a Heritage Preservation District. No, I do not live in the Heritage Preservation District. And I don't think putting forth something that the appellant told the HPRBs they didn't want is necessarily a good thing, because they would have considered it had the, their applicant been willing to discuss it, but they weren't. So, I don't think they, the HPRB did anything wrong, for the record.
Further discussion? Mr., hold on. Mr. DeKalb? I was like, who made this motion? I think Jen already spoke.
So, I wanted to make a comment, but understand also here that, so, architecture asphalt shingles and decorative asphalt shingles are about the same price. They are?
They are similar in price. They, the, my understanding is the decorative, the decorative is a little more expensive, somewhat more expensive than the architectural, but nowhere near as expensive as a standing seam roof.
So, if we are, if we are approving based on the price basis or cost of financial, you know, efficiency basis, then if we have a concrete picture on, you know, the delta, then it would be easy for us to decide.
But that has not been provided, and it wasn't provided at the HPRB either. Yes, Ms. Baker?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify something Ms. Olum said. I don't, my interpretation from watching that meeting and, and from what Mr. Walker talked about tonight, is that they didn't consider and fully discuss the option of the decorative shingles, which is why I think it's the right alternative, because, again, it still suits at least a possible option. We can all agree this is not an ideal option. We can all agree that a, a metal shingled roof would be the ideal option. That's, that's not, not feasible. I also want to mention on financial consideration, we have to look at what the guidelines say today, not what they want them to say, or what we hope they say, or what they should say. What the guidelines say today is that you should have a financial consideration when it comes to roofs. And, again, the consideration has nothing to do with Ms. Veda's W2 or her assets. It doesn't matter, and it shouldn't matter for any app, appellant who comes to us. It doesn't matter. They're, they can be millionaires, and we can still have a financial consideration based on the fact that certain roof styles are three to five to six X what other roof styles are. So, that's what we have to consider when we're talking about financial consideration, is just the enormous delta in trying to keep the aesthetics of a historic roof with materials that simply aren't made. It's just not as common to have big stamped metal-seamed roofs anymore, which is why they're super expensive today, when they were more common then, when there was less materials to choose from. So, it's about making those comparisons. Thank you.
Mr. McKenna?
I just, I'd like to echo a little bit of what Ms. Baker said, and also, Ms. Olum, I, I think you are correct. I, I think what happened, again, in the meeting was, I think there was, there were some clarification issues, you know, in regards to what had happened. And I also can appreciate what Mr. DeKalb and Mr. Delagula have been saying. Last August 7th, I submitted to council, and you can certainly, FOIA, it's there, and I can certainly send it to anybody, about 17 pages of questions about the HPRB. So, you know, I've been working hard at this. And also, too, I know more about hardy plank than I do about some budget issues, and that was never an issue before. So, I, you know, I do understand, you know, economics and everything else, but the, what's in front of us is the, the rules that we have based upon the applicant's application and the, and our staff's recommendations, coupled with questions we have asked tonight. So, I think based upon everything that's happened, I'm very comfortable with this decision based upon staff's considerations and interpretation from the HPRB.
Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Friedrichs, followed by the Vice Mayor, and then I am closing out this discussion.
My recollection, just to clarify something that Ms. Olum mentioned, my recollection of the, of the session, which I watched last night, was that the HPRB discussed four options. They discussed the standing seam, I mean, sorry, the, the stamped tin roof, which is unfeasible. They discussed the, the standing seam, which Ms. Veda says she will not.
Well, she's appealed that decision, so.
All right. They discussed a, a product that hasn't been released yet, that is a less expensive tile, metal tile roof, which she rejected because it, it hasn't been tested yet. And they discussed the decorative asphalt. So, the decorative asphalt isn't something that hasn't been on the market for a while. It's been on for several years.
And Madam Vice Mayor?
Yeah, again, I'm just not, I'm not getting what they did wrong. And when finances came up, the applicant to the HPRB said that it was none of their business how she was going to pay for it, and they ask, you know, we don't have any quotes. And all of the quotes that they had gotten were just things that the applicant had written. They were not real quotes. If I get a quote to have anything done at my house where it's an HVAC or whatever, I get it in writing from the contractor. And if I go to another contractor saying I'm trying to get a better price, they're not going to even talk to me unless they see it in writing. So, by not letting the HPRB have any information about quotes, it's kind of hard for me to see that this is a serious financial issue, because when they did try to discuss it, it was, it's none of your business how I pay for it.
So, I'm going to just inject some reality here. Where I came tonight prepared to affirm the decision of the HPRB, I, I don't think that an error was made. It is obvious that there is no appetite here to affirm the, the HPRB's decision. So, we can vote on that and vote that down, and then Ms. Veda has no decision and has to start over, which does not get her a roof anytime soon, which is her main goal. She's in a leaky house with mold. She's in a, in a situation that is not great. The HPRB approved a COA with standing seam, which is not what the applicant wants. She's appealed that. That's why we're here tonight. Staff recommended the decorative asphalt, believing that it also met the criteria, and the HPRB disagreed with that. The HPRB and the Town Council tonight both have rejected the architectural shingles that are what she would like to have on her house. And I do, I agree that they do not fit the criteria or the guidelines. So, we're going to have to compromise, or we're going to put Ms. Veda in a situation where she has to go back through an entire process and is nowhere near a roof. So, I can support, given the situation we're in, the substitute motion to, to modify approving the decorative asphalt. Then at least the homeowner has an option that is much more financially feasible, it seems, than what is currently on the table for her. She still has the right to appeal that to the circuit court, and they may overturn what we've done. That is the way the process happens. I, we don't know what happens until that happens. But if we affirm it, if we were to affirm it, she's still in the same boat. She doesn't like what we, what we have affirmed, so her option is the same. And I will sleep better tonight, personally, knowing that we have done something to try and give a feasible option that is more affordable to get a roof sooner. I hope that made sense. So, I am prepared to support this substitute motion, if I can find it, to approve the decorative. I've, I've, you should see my papers up here. It's just, we'll have to talk tomorrow and make sure we get this right. So, so with that, I am prepared to call the question on the substitute motion, which was made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, which is to modify the HPRB's decision, replacing the word standing seam with decorative asphalt shingles. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Olum?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember De Aguilar?
Yes. The motion on the floor is to modify the HPRB's decision, removing the words from the certificate of appropriateness, removing standing seam, and replacing that with decorative asphalt Mr. Delagula?
Councilmember De Kalb?
No.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel?
Yes. So, that motion carries with the, the Vice Mayor, Mr. Delagula, and Mr. De Kalb voting So, what is now true is the certificate of appropriateness will say, or I guess it does say as soon as we, when does she get her certificate of appropriateness, which now will allow the option of the decorative.
It'll be sent out by staff, I would think, by tomorrow or the next day. It will, it, the, the certificate of appropriateness would now say that it is approved for her to replace her roof with decorative. her roof with decorative asphalt shingles.
Thank you. Appeals are never easy.
Do we have to vote on the original one?
Nope. That was a substitute. Okay, I am, we still have several. Where are we?
Do we still have stuff?
Okay, yep, we do. So I'm just gonna press on without a break. If you need to take a break, feel free. Resolution 19G61 to approve a temporary license agreement to use a designated public space in the alley adjacent to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern for outdoor seating for an event, and I will...
Madam Mayor?
Open the public hearing for...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a public hearing. Second.
Jimmy's license to use the alley between 689 and 681 for an event, as he's done several times in the past.
Questions?
Uh-uh.
All right. This is, applicant's not here. It's a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to come forward and speak on this item?
They might be.
Okay. I know. Well, I gotta ask. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Move to council for discussion and action.
Sounds good. Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 19G61.
Second.
Third.
Okay, all the discussion on the motion? Now, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Woo, look at that! That motion carried. Okay, next up is Resolution 16G62 to approve a temporary license agreement for the use of the town public parking lot behind the Med Breeze for the anniversary event on Saturday, and I will...
This is a little bit different. We haven't had Mile 20 make any requests to, before. This is the first request to use the town parking lot, which contains public shared parking. They are planning to use it for a one-day event. I believe it's from 10:00 to midnight on the 28th of September. They have applied for, and I believe will receive a temporary use permit to do so. They've given us the adequate insurance certificate, and we do not have any information that they do not, that anything is amiss with their ABC permit. So appears that everything would be in order.
Other questions of staff?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here? And if you are, do you want to come speak on this item? Officer G? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Move to council for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of... 16-G-62.
Second.
19. It's 19.
All right. A motion made by Ms. Olum, seconded by Ms. Baker. Discussion on the motion?
Clarification, it's 19-G-62, not 16.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you.
Talking about the breeze, that one. Thank you. Good catch. I'm not catching little details like that anymore. Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion on the motion.
She made the motion, but I...
Yeah. I'm glad to do this, because we took up all their space with our rotary car show a few weeks ago, so I'm happy to return the favor.
All right. Ms. Baker?
Yep. I just wanted to clarify one thing. It's noon to 10:00. I think the attorney said 10:00 to midnight, but I think it's noon to 10:00, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's noon to 10:00. And also, just clarified with the owner, it will actually be from the edge of the Animal Hospital building down. So we talked about the mural last week, but did clarify really that it won't be affected by that part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Punk and getting this up.
Not gonna happen.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those approved, those opposed. All right, thank you. That brings us to our general item, which is a resolution to accept the State of the Town report for fiscal year 2019. And I am supposed to recognize Bill Ashton to present this report. Our charter requires that this report is presented at a public hearing in September.
Yes, it is.
It's 11:00, and there's no one here to hear this great report. Is it possible to submit the report in writing and actually have this presentation at the next meeting when people are here? This is such important work. I don't want people to miss it. Does that violate our charter? And I guess I would have to get the...
I keep talking.
Here's the charter right here.
Just happen to have a copy. Well, we can do it tonight. I just feel like this is really important, and nobody's here.
I think that if he makes the submission at a public hearing, you open the public hearing, and then you continue the public hearing.
It's a general item.
Perfect.
It's a general item, yeah.
There we go.
Continue.
You're my favorite town attorney.
So wait, what are we doing? I'm confused. I like checked out a long time ago, obviously. So do we say for the record that it has been submitted?
Yes.
And we can accept the State of the Town, and are we...
We need a motion to continue.
Pass it to me and then make the...
I move we continue. Okay, I just want to make sure that it is on the record that it is submitted.
Yes. So Madam Mayor, pursuant to the charter provisions, the specific task outlined for me to submit to you in September, you have received the annual report. You should have received it today. It will go up on the website tomorrow and be available for the public to see. Much like in the previous two years, in lieu of an executive summary, we have prepared the brochure. The brochure you should also be holding in your hand will also be going up on the website, and will be hitting mailboxes later this week. And with that, I would love to go through some of the highlights, because there's some phenomenal work done by some great people that I would make sure I'd like to see them get recognized for. So if I could possibly come back in two weeks to, or three weeks in this case, to have that discussion, I would welcome the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I know you're all prepared for it tonight, and I feel kinda bad, but is there, I will entertain a motion to continue. Does...
I'll second.
Third.
Continue made by Baker, seconded by McKenna. Discussion?
Do we still need to have an open public hearing?
It's a general item.
Oh, it's a general item.
Yep.
Do we need to have a date certain?
Nope.
All righty. Sounds good.
All right, so we are continuing this into the next public hearing, which I believe is like October 9th or something like that.
Whatever.
Anyway, whenever that is.
At some point.
Whenever the next public hearing is, that's when we're gonna hear this. So I will call the question on the motion to continue.
Yes.
Made by Baker, seconded by McKenna. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that, oh, now we have a closed meeting, guys.
What?
Yes.
It's been on the agenda since Friday. I need a motion to go into the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A3.
So moved.
Second.
To consult with legal counsel and to discuss and consider the acquisition of real property within the Herndon Transit Oriented Corp. for a public purpose where such discussion or consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating charter of the council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're gonna have a five-minute break, and we will see you in the Hoover Conference Room.